Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the 2020 City of Tallahassee Annual Retreat. First of all, let me personally apologize that we are running a little bit late. We had Dad's event at our elementary school that I was pleased to be able to attend, but kind of sent me back a minute or two. So the annual retreat, let me remind you, gives us the opportunity to sit back in an informal setting and kind of talk about our first year together as a commission, what we were able to accomplish, what we're concentrating on, and then of course, how do we move forward under our new strategic plan and all of the great ideas that we brought to the table. Today's going to be a great day. I want to thank our team out here at the airport for hosting us. David, it's great to see you. I appreciate you putting the blinds down or else I would just be watching the planes all day, you know, coming and going and whatnot. But nonetheless, glad to have everybody here. Let me go ahead and turn it over to the city manager to kind of walk us through today and bring us up speed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today. I'm certainly looking forward to the conversation and discussion. I think we've got a very comprehensive discussion today. We'll touch on it more, but at last year's retreat, you set the frame for how we would approach this past year of engagement with our community, good, clear focus and planning, the creation of a strategic plan, and certainly we'll talk about all those elements today. Let me give a rundown of the flow for today. It certainly seems appropriate as we start thinking about 2020 and we plan and discuss the priorities as you give guidance in terms of that, that we take a moment and we visit 2019. And so we'll do that at the top. I'll run through that and just hit on some high points. We have booklets that were on the table as we entered the room. I would encourage everyone to take one. Our 2019 Year in Review is also online, and it's something that we're very proud of, something that we had not produced in the past as an organization, but that we have set the tone to do moving forward. And it's framed around the priorities that you established in the strategic plan so that we can look forward to that concise summary of all of the activities from the prior year, and we'll run through that. We'll then move to a discussion, we'll have an introduction to the airport by our own David Pollard, our director of our airport. He'll welcome us and talk about the good things going on here. We'll move to a discussion about economic development led by Assistant City Manager Wayne Tetter, which will also touch on the airport clearly as a big driver and a tool for our economy locally. We'll then move to a discussion about public safety and the impact on poverty that will be opened by Deputy City Manager Cynthia Barber, followed by Chief Revel, who's here with us today. Glad to have the chief. And then followed by Dr. Kimball Thomas to give us an update on Tempo and our youth engagement, such a big part of our strategy to impact poverty. That should take us to about lunchtime, we think. Following each presentation, of course, what we're anticipating is commission discussion and direction, and we're drawing out those main priority issues that are in your strategic plan. As we come back from the break, our city attorney Cassandra Jackson will lead us in a discussion about ethics that falls under our priority of public trust. I'm looking forward to that discussion. We've talked a lot about that this past year, and of course, that is a paramount issue for the City of Tallahassee. We'll close with our presentations with a presentation from Assistant City Manager Revel Lavine on our operational effectiveness. And that will, he's going to show, not to steal his thunder a little bit, I'm excited about this, but clearly as we have presented a strategic plan that is very thorough and comprehensive with a lot of measures and targets, we must find ways to measure ourselves, to project those measurements internally and externally, so we're going to talk a little bit about that moving forward. And then of course, have general discussion from you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners about, you know, your insights for this coming year and how we move forward. So I think we have a very full agenda. We're going to move quickly. We understand we've got a lot of folks that are interested in hearing what we're doing, and I'm looking forward to today.
Excellent. I know we got a couple of members of the public that'd like to speak. When do you recommend that we entertain public input?
Mr. Mayor, I think it would be appropriate, now this is your retreat, so of course, this is pre-flow, but I think it might be appropriate at the conclusion as after we present the Year in Review, I think that might be a good punctuation for what we do and then prior to your discussion about 2020.
Sounds good. Before we move forward, I'd like to open it up to my colleagues, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Any opening comments before going into today?
Good morning.
Good morning. Excellent. That's what I like. That's what I like. Commissioner Matt La.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Guess I follow suit. Good morning.
Here we go.
Ditto. Good morning. We're just ready to get started.
With that, we are back on schedule. It's good to know. Mr. City Manager will turn it back over to you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Let me go ahead and do the Year in Review. Again, I mentioned there's some books. I encourage you to take them, and I'm going to only touch on the highlights. I think this will elicit some good thoughts about what happened last year and the momentum we have moving into 2020. So I think it's only appropriate to start with some energy. We are at the airport, it's a great place to be. I think it makes us all feel good about all things City of Tallahassee. And so I would like to show a video. It's a very brief video, I think you'll enjoy it, and then I'll make some comments. If you'll watch the video, please.
Excellent.
Excellent. Good luck to get started. Lots happened in 2019. There's no doubt it was a challenging year, and I reflect back to the retreat that we had, and you gave us guidance on our priorities and establishing a strategic plan and really setting the course for the years to come, and that seems like yesterday frankly. But we know a lot has happened, and I'd like to walk through a little bit of that at this point. So you'll recall at our discussion last year, we talked about our mission, vision, and values, which set the foundation for a strategic plan and a real look forward. And you said, "We think we should revisit those." In fact, they had been in place, good, certainly good mission statement, vision statement, and values, but they've been in place 22 years. And so I think the theme was a fresh start. I think the theme was make sure that we inspect everything and we're engaging with our public and providing the service that we know we want to provide and is expected by our community. And we did that quickly. We did it with city employees as well as members of the public, and they crafted a new mission and vision and value statement. I'll say consistent with what we had in the past, because I believe as a community, we historically have been consistent, and we've been uniquely Tallahassee. That mission statement, very succinct, because of course, we have a lot of services that we provide to our community. The breadth of what we do in the City of Tallahassee is great, and they simply came up that we were going to be the leader in the delivery of public service. We were going to be the best, and I certainly appreciate that. Their voice, I could hear my voice and their voice as they came up with that, and I liked it. And they also said that we're going to be a vibrant community with strong neighborhoods and be the hub of our education and educational hub and economic hub. But again, we're going to be uniquely Tallahassee. That was our vision. And our values led off with that we were going to engender public trust through ethical behavior. I thought it was appropriate. But we were always going to provide exceptional citizen service, lead with integrity, collaborate with others. I think I've seen strong elements of that. Invest in our employees that do such good work every day, and promote equity and celebrate diversity. I think as we draw out those values, we can reflect on some of those that happened this year. So that really set the tone, and that was done early in the year. That took us a few months, and we moved forward. So that really set the tone for quick movement. In the booklet I've now mentioned, Year in Review, we've got a few just quick highlights. We've got a $900 million budget, so this year, a balanced budget nonetheless. This year, we'll invest in our community $900 million, and so I highlight that. And that just encapsulates so many different things. 410 sworn police officer positions makes us one of the top 10 police forces in the state of Florida, so big responsibility. Millions, 3.3 millions of passengers on Star Metro, many, many miles of trails, 70 miles of trails frankly. I'm not sure how you get 70 miles of trails in a city, but we have, and we should be proud of it, in 88 parks. And I could go on and on, but a lot of work, a lot of value to our community, and that's highlighted in the plan. Let me move on and talk about the priority areas, because I think this will be the theme of what we talk about today and what we talk about moving forward, is we structure our discussion, we structure our focus based on the priorities that you have set, and we track ourselves and we measure progress in that regard. Organizational effectiveness is an internally facing strategy, largely talking about the workforce and how we are effective in what we do. And at the top, I've now mentioned numerous times, you gave us the direction to adopt a strategic plan. You did that, or to create a strategic plan, and you adopted the plan late last year. That gives us great clarity, it gives us great focus, and I certainly think sets the tone. Now, of course, the timeframe of the strategic plan is five years. And the significance of that five years versus, it's not too long, it's not too short, but it exactly coincides with our 200th anniversary. Tallahassee's 195 years old. We're a proud community that's existed for many, many years, one of the oldest in our region of course, and so it sets the tone for our 200th year in 2024. Just one of the elements I want to draw out, because these are important things, is Mayor Commissioners, you passed a parental leave policy for mothers and fathers of new children, infants, and adopted children, a very, very progressive policy that's been enjoyed by our workforce. I think something that we should be proud of, and that certainly pays them the respect that they're due as city employees. Something I'm personally proud of is I created the Office of Diversity and Inclusion. This is based on your leadership to make sure that our workforce, our workforce of 3,000-plus individuals that work so hard every day, looks like the community it serves. As you know, I talk to the city employees, I have what we have dubbed as all-hands meetings. We do eight or 10 of those to make sure we can touch everybody, and I've said it over and over, and it's a simple principle that we look like the community we serve, and that's not just race, it's gender, sexual orientation, you name it, we are the community. And that's not by default. It doesn't happen by default. It happens with purpose and intention. And so we've created a special department and office to focus on that. And then just this last year, the city's leadership team, the makeup of the department directors, we had the opportunity to hire five directors, which enhanced our diversity at that leadership level, something we made great progress in simply one year. So I point those things out, because that's encapsulated in our organizational effectiveness of who we are and the character that we have. I'm going to move on, and you could see there are many other bullets, but I just wanted to draw out a few. All of these are in the Year in Review. I would encourage everybody to read. Next priority area, quality of life, and this is in no particular order. I would like to point out, really drawing upon the point I just made about diversity in our workforce, is that externally, the Human Rights Campaign ranks employers every year, and they get a score relative to 100, and we scored 99 as an inclusive LGBTQ inclusive municipal employer, something I think that we should highlight, celebrate, and it points to our culture. Deep in that quality of life is our neighborhoods. We've talked a lot about our neighborhoods, have we embraced our neighborhoods. As you know, that the very first Bond Neighborhood Plan was adopted last year. We've got great progress in the French Town Plan. Deputy City Manager Barber, almost single-handedly, I think, I'm going to give her the credit for really providing the leadership and bringing that home, because these are hard to do, right, to get everybody on the same page, something I think we should be proud of. We've established a model that we can build upon. And then you've discussed, you did it, the first meeting that you had last year to talk about engagement with our community, making sure we're listening to the community, and you took numerous actions to make sure that we had opportunities to listen and engage, and we highlighted more than 130 community meetings, workshops, and citizen group meetings, which included city commission meetings off-site like this one that the public can attend easily. I'll move on to economic development. So clearly, this is self-explanatory economic development. In our role as a local government, how do we encourage a growing economy? How do we encourage jobs and investment in our community? One of the decisions that you made late last year was to pave the way for another broadband company to come to Tallahassee that sets the stage for us to be the first gigabit community in the state of Florida, for our entire community to have access to gigabit broadband speeds, and that's underway. Construction is ready to commence. There's no public dollars in that construction, that's private dollars, but the City of Tallahassee, through its actions, through your leadership, said we're open for business, we want to be friendly, we want to make sure that permitting can happen smoothly, and by the way, we want to take advantage of the utility resources to the best ability, which included allowing additional pole attachments to our utility poles that exist. So it's a good use of resources, a creative solution to enhance what our community needs, which is greater broadband speeds, and we're poised to be the best in the state of Florida. I mentioned now public trust and how that's included in our value statement. You took, you spent a lot of time on this last year and took numerous actions. Right off the bat, you took actions to eliminate the 30-minute provision at the city commission meetings, the limitation, what was, what could have been a limitation for public speakers. You eliminated that quickly this year and increased the opportunity for the public to input at the beginning of the meetings during items. You sent that signal that was loud and clear. That was heard by the community, that was heard by us as well, and certainly set the tone. We put a full list of the lobbyists and vendors on talgov.com, so there's transparency and visibility of that. And I've already mentioned that you took the city commission meetings outside of City Hall to the public. A trend will continue again this year with your leadership. And then with lots of work and lots of input and lots of thought, good guidance from our city attorney, you passed an ethics reform, a comprehensive sweeping ethics reform that put us in the posture to have the most, the strongest ethics ordinance in the state of Florida. And you'll hear more about that later today. Moving on to public infrastructure, this is a very broad category that encapsulates so many things. This is not just the hard things, this is not just the roads and the sidewalks, but something I'm proud of at the very top, you'll remember, lots of effort, lots of thought went into it, was the adoption of a clean energy plan, set the tone, to take Tallahassee to be a renewable community by 2050, a very aggressive posture, a very forward-thinking posture that truly is a leadership position for our country. With that, there's so many elements, whether it's transportation or electric utility, and we're well on the way to doing that. We just commercialized our second solar farm right out here at the window. We can see hundreds of acres of solar panels that are feeding energy into our grid today to carry us down that road, and the development of that is ongoing. In terms of roads, we don't build a lot of new roads in our community, right? We're very careful not to build too many roads, but we've got a couple that are underway, the Weems Pass project, not just the road, but also multi-use path. It is underway on the east side of town to help alleviate some congestion we have in that intersection of Capital Circle and Mahan, as well as flooding, chronic flooding that we had relative to that stormwater facility. That's underway, and we know our FAMU Way segment, our final FAMU Way segment, is well underway. Infrastructure that we may not think about is our transportation infrastructure. We're making great gains. We added 15 new electric buses, 15 new full-size electric buses to our fleet. They are awesome, they look good, and I couldn't be, I totally, we wanted to do it, we weren't sure how we would do it, but it got done. It got done, and they're working, and it's great, and I think we should all be proud of it, and it certainly sets the tone as we move forward. And then of course, the things that we think of as infrastructure are miles, 500 miles of sidewalk. The team has done an excellent job in the capital maintenance of that, changing our course from years ago where we're repairing sidewalks, we're actively replacing sidewalks, and then we're adding sidewalks at your direction. And not only sidewalks, but our roads, they repaved 60 miles roadway. In fact, if you're driving around, I think you probably, maybe, maybe I'm just more cognizant of it, we've repaved a lot of roads, and I couldn't be prouder of the team to find creative ways to do it. And our roads, the conditions of our roads are improving in fact with your leadership. Let me move on to a much discussed topic, one that clearly is a priority for our community, public safety. We talk about public safety and crime, but let me, let me talk about the enhancement of public safety for a moment by our fire department. So our fire department provides advanced life support services, is complimentary to our EMS locally, and with your leadership, we expanded the coverage of ALS Advanced Life Support Services, that's paramedic service, to 80% of our entire community, not just the city, that's all of our residents in Leon County. That's something we should be proud of, that's an enhancement that improves our quality of life in our community. And kudos to our fire department for coming up with a creative way, and thank you for your leadership of moving that in the strategic plan. We want to move forward to 100%. These are the values that are things that we can add value to our community through. And the fact is, our fire department, through collaboration with our EMS, they are the first to arrive on scene about half the time, in fact, more than half the time. And so when you arrive on that scene, the person there expects to be, had the best service they can, and we made a lot of headway toward that this past year. And something a little different than we may think about public safety, you remember you adopted the Community Resilience Plan, because resilience is more than just about storms, it's about your economic resilience, your community's resilience to threats that may impact it, that ultimately feed into public safety. So I wanted to draw those out that are non-traditional in our current conversations. Moving on, this is a priority area that you discussed much last year, impact of poverty. It was top of mind for you, and I think we've done a good job following your lead to create some structure to it, and I'd like to say that the workforce has embraced it, the city's workforce has embraced it. Last year spent more than 600 hours building new homes in Habitat for Humanity. That was their hours, that was their volunteering, that was the give-back beyond what they do every day. And of course, the city, we pledged dollars to facilitate that. That, you know, in the whole scheme of things, those homes are few, but it sets the tone. Tempo, we're going to hear more about that later today, that program, I think we all should be repeating. The notes you see say that we have 740 participants, which is growing exponentially, and Dr. Thomas will tell us later today, that that number's 800 now. They're making great gains, great gains. But most importantly, and this is a standard, I don't think that we should expect it to keep up, but I think it's an excellent trend, there's been no recidivism of the participants in that program. So that clearly indicates their success in this. If we can engage our youth, our disconnected youth, and they get them on a path of an education or some training or some skills, maybe just a driver's license, then it can make a difference. I think we've got great things to come on that. And of course, with your leadership, you have pledged considerable resources to landing the low-income housing tax credits, which are instrumental, instrumental in the development of our Orange Avenue Apartments in proximity to our South City community. That will be so important to the revitalization and the vibrance of that community with a considerable pledge through the city, through the CRA. You wear both hats, you have lots of hats you wear. That was a big deal this past year, which should lead to positive dividends.
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir.
It already has. They were notified that they were awarded a $23 million grant for Phase 1 of the Orange Avenue, Orange Avenue Apartments renovation and revitalization.
That's excellent, David. That's excellent news. Thank you, sir. I know you've been pushing that issue from your point of view for many years now. That's excellent news, because I'll be honest with you, it's a long shot. We all knew that was a long shot. That's excellent news.
Yes.
I think good things are to come. And let me, let me finish with, you know, we had these accomplishments, this not to say last year wasn't challenging, every year will be challenging, but we did see progress, and we wanted to highlight that. And we were recognized. We were recognized nationally, we were recognized by livability.com as one of the top 100 places to live. We all know it, right? We know that, and Southern Living said we were a top 10 city. We knew that too. They've just now found out. And something that I'm proud of is that our gas utility was recognized best in the nation. That's just good work by the folks in our gas utility for doing a good job. And so we had some good national recognition that certainly can corroborate some of the things that we see here locally. So I appreciate the opportunity to share some of the highlights. Again, please, take a copy of the book, read what's going on. I think it's certainly indicative of our potential and things that we can do in the year to come. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Let's go ahead. Thank you. Certainly, we appreciate it. Mr. Cook, it's been suggested this is the appropriate time to have some public comment. How many speakers do we have?
I believe we have five. I believe we have five mayor, one. That is correct, and I believe they're all speaking on the same topics, so.
Okay, sounds great. Let's get going.
Okay. The first is Debbie Lightsie, and then Kathy McGuire.
Commissioner Lightsie, are you here?
Jake Varne.
Jake Varne then will be our first speaker.
Mr. Varne, good to see you, sir. Your name and address for the record, right over here at the podium. Name and address in three minutes, please, sir.
I'll do my best.
It's good to see you, Jake.
Good morning, Mayor. Commissioner, my name is Jake Varne. I reside at 1501 Fernando Drive, Tallahassee, Florida 32303. I am on the Board of Directors of the Los Robles Homeowners Association, but today I'm here on behalf of the Association of Tallahassee Neighborhoods, which is comprised of about 12 neighborhoods and 3,500 households here in the City of Tallahassee, which was fairly newly created, been in existence a little over a year, and we're trying to become more active in the various activities that the city is conducting, and you know better than I what you're doing. You've got the strategic plan, you have a comprehensive plan, you have a midtown planning group, you're trying to select a new site for the police department. So there are all kinds of activities that we are trying to follow and participate in, and sometimes we participate better than in others, but we try our best to be to these types of functions and provide our concerns and our comments. And I hope to be positive today in terms of my comments. The seven priority areas that you have identified coincide, there's a lot of those, there's at least, we have about five core values of things that we are interested in. We are interested in neighborhood preservation, residential density, mobility, affordable housing, and public trust. Those are our core values around which we operate, and those fit in fairly nicely with the seven priority areas. And so we've tried to take your seven priority areas and look at it with our core values in mind. We have, I can tell you, spent literally hundreds and hundreds of hours, and we have speakers from the city come in, we have private citizens come in to address, and we try to come up with a consolidate- come up with a consolidated position on issues as opposed to having this neighborhood going that way, and that neighborhood going that way. We're trying to consolidate so that we speak with a single voice, and that's not easy all the time, and sometimes we find ourselves in a position that we can't arrive at, that neutral position, but we keep working at it. The, I have several concerns or several issues I'd like to raise with you about the plan as it exists, and I left my nice printed version that I picked up this morning, I have my old notebook that I printed off, the online version, and that I use for reviewing these, the plan. One suggestion I would make is that it would be nice if there was a version that just had your priority areas, your goals, your objectives, and then your targets, so you can follow it. Now, it's kind of divided up, and you have to switch from one to the other, but you'll see, I try to get organized, and so I've got all my tabs here, so I can do it, but it's not easy for, I think, the average person to pick that up. If you will, just, figures and all are nice, I don't get excited about the photographs, and as far as I'm concerned, you could ditch those, but that's just my personal preference. The biggest thing that, that I think we find in looking at this, that our biggest concern is the lack of metrics. On your targets, you provide, this is what our target is, and in most cases, it's five years, occasionally you do it annually, but I can recall, for example, you have five-point-five year, five miles of wastewater lines that you want to rehabilitate. Okay, what does that mean? How many miles of wastewater line do you have? How many miles do you, do, do that need rehabilitating? How much are you, of that goal are you working towards, and when do you seek, when do you hope you're going to make all of them be rehabbed so you don't have those leaking problems?
You're at three minutes.
Pardon?
Just a heads up that you're at three minutes.
I'm bringing, I'm bringing it to a close.
Thank you, sir.
But the, the, we have some very technical things, but primarily the metrics are what it is. Get metrics, put them in, and perhaps you want to put more material in the appendix and do it there, okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I did have my, senility takes over at times.
Thank you, thank you so much. Thanks for coming out. Our next speaker.
Our next speaker is Wendy Gray.
Ms. Gray, good to see you. Happy New Year. Name and address for the record, please.
Wendy Gray, 1047 Myers Park Drive, and I'm also here as a member of the Alliance of Tallahassee Neighborhoods, and as Jake said, I'd just like to reiterate that we support the goals and objectives that are included in the strategic plan, and our issue really relates to some of the ways in which you discuss implementing it. Now, we do have some slides, I don't know who's doing those, but they were, okay, next one. Okay, and you can see here, right? Okay, so the first metric that we deal with is Objective 2C, and this is under the goal of impacting poverty, and is to facilitate and encourage the construction of affordable housing units. Your current initiative is to increase density within the city limits. We think that that could be more directed so that you could better measure and identify the, the progress, so we recommend that you change, that by 2020, and we always assume that to mean by the end of the year, reassess large areas, you have lots of property within the center city that are already zoned CU-45, how are those being used, are there impediments to their development, are they affecting the cost of housing, and also the potential for redevelopment. Next slide. And along with that line, we'd recommend some additional initiatives. In 2017, you received a Task Force Affordable Housing Task Force Report, and we encourage you to review that and to take action on it. And lastly, we think there's a very important connection between availability of transit and affordable housing, and so that the city's housing initiatives should be tied to improving transit. Okay, next slide. The next objective that we deal with is public infrastructure, and that's Objective 4E, to ensure public transit is accessible, efficient, and equitable. And your current metric relates to the rate of on-time transit performance, and obviously that's very important, but there is a lot of discussion throughout the strategic plan about the need to encourage multimodal development and to promote expanded transit, and we wanted to refer you to a comp plan objective you currently have. I've updated the date, but it does call for local government to identify alternative and innovative funding sources to support an effective transit system, and there is more detail in the comp plan, but we think you can tie those two documents together and, and provide some more specificity. Okay, next one is ensure public transit is accessible, efficient, and equitable, it's the same one. In March of 2019, the city received an assessment of a multimodal ordinance, a number of issues were.
You're at about two and a half minutes, just.
Okay, good. That were identified, that were inhibiting the full beneficial implementation of the multimodal ordinance, and we would like the city commission to get the opportunity to review and comment on that. Okay, my last one, next slide is on public trust, enhance citizen access to city government operations and public meetings. I think, as most of you know, the Alliance has been working with staff for the past year on a range of issues. While we've made progress on some of those, we've not made progress on others, but none of them have come before the city commission yet, and so we're recommending a metric that within sixty days of receiving written requests from neighborhood associations regarding policy and code changes, that staff will present that request to the city commission. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Debbie Lightsey.
Commissioner Lightsey, good to see you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here also with the Alliance of Tallahassee Neighborhoods. My address is 2340 Cypress Cove. I know the drill, John. 2340 Cypress Cove Drive, just across the lake from here. I'm speaking on the Quality of Life section, since we are about neighborhoods and how they fit within the city and how they're protected, this is one of our primary issues. We would like to see this a little more focused on neighborhood protection and integrity, and how you handle the boundaries between the neighborhoods, particularly RP neighborhoods, and what abuts them. But more specifically, could we go to the next slide? Objective seven is enhance and preserve the unique characteristics of neighborhoods. We would like to see you revise the metric, which currently talks about encouraging voluntary compliance for code violations. That process can drag out forever and ever while you try to work this out. We would like to see you focus that a little bit more and reduce the average length of time that properties are allowed to stay in non-compliance. Just set some standards there. We want to add initiatives to implement metric four, which is the percentage of urban forest tree canopy coverage, and these next are from your Urban Forest Master Plan. We would like to see them directly referenced. Complete an inventory of public trees by 2012. Evaluate and update preservation and planning regulations by 2012. Create a purpose-based planting plan that reflects the city goals by 2012. We like to see dates, and we'd like to see more metrics. Some of these are very general, and they don't have timelines and numeric targets with them. And add metric six, this we think is, is one that everybody should embrace. Increase the AARP livable city score to eighty percent from fifty-seven percent by 2024. And the city is an AARP livable city, and we've got a website on here that you can look at that one. And then we add another metric. Complete evaluation of code changes to promote compatibility between non-residential and low-density residential uses with scope to be determined jointly by the staff and the neighborhood representatives. This is an issue that has been contentious for many, many years. We think it's time to take it on. I don't think it can wait for the comprehensive plan, so many of the things we've been working on are held up until the plan is completed, and you know, your staff worked on the plan for four years. You are now moving, I think, very positively to have a consultant there, but it could be two more years.
You're at almost three.
The mobility report, what we've been working with on staff about borders and neighborhood compatibility and transition zones, those are all held up until the comp plan is completed, and lots of bad things are happening in the interim. So we would like to see something more specific to cover that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Next speaker is Kathy McGuire.
Ms. McGuire, good to see you.
Thank you, good morning. I'm Kathy McGuire. I live at 1101 Pine Street. I too am with the Alliance of Tallahassee Neighborhoods through Lafayette Park Neighborhood Association, and I'm cleanup, I'm here to, to go over the last slide, which is, we've got a little ten at the bottom of the page. So we're suggesting some tweaks to the strategic plan, having to do with our, our trees that we're all so fond of, so we're suggesting that we complete an inventory of public trees by 2021, and add this, these are initiatives, of course, for the strategic plan. Evaluate and update tree preservation and planting regs by 2021, and create a purpose-based planting plan that reflects the city goals also by 2021. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Our next speaker.
Next speaker is Grant Gelhart.
Grant Gelhart, good to see you, sir.
He is the fifth of the ones I had earlier, but we do have a couple others who've arrived.
I appreciate your communication, I apologize for not responding to you yesterday.
Okay, well, I have a copy over here. Anyway, my name is Grant Gelhart, I live at 1906 Chulini, Indian Head Acres. I'm here on behalf of the Big Ben Sierra Club. The plan is very good, I like the plan, it has a lot of good stuff in it. Some things have been mentioned about metrics, maybe more metrics in there, goals to achieve, and these goals should be aspirational, you know, what do we want to be, where do we want to go? Maybe we'll make it, maybe we won't. One thing I thought would be, that we should do, is become a LEED certified community in the next five years. LEED certified is Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. Orlando just became a LEED certified city, I think Tallahassee should jump in there also. Also, I noticed that the city has designated a silver designation by the League of American Bicycleists. Let's go for the gold. Come on, let's, let's move forward, jump ahead, I think we can do that. With development comes a responsibility to also protect our remaining natural resources and open space. I think we should have a goal, I think a goal of increasing public greenway, conservation, and park open space by ten percent in the next five years is an admirable goal. With development, we need to come to protection, so let's think about that. Also, I know that we have in there a green printing plan, I think we should, I'm not sure, I didn't read the entire document, but the green printing plan is important. I know we brought you, the commission has brought that back, the, the plan needs to address sustainability, resiliency, environmental protection, we need to double look at that and make sure that that is addressed. Also, by 2025, in the next five years, I think all facilities, or the city's building, buildings and facilities should be generating twenty-five percent of their own electricity through solar power or whatever other opportunities, or reduce electricity by insulation and so forth. One of my main concerns is water quality. Water quality is very important, we need to develop a plan, we need to move forward. DEP is not going to do everything for us, so we need to move forward and reduce by fifty percent or a metric number, whatever may be appropriate, the pollution's going into our impaired water bodies. Believe it or not, Tallahassee has impaired water bodies, and we should not have impaired water bodies by, designated by DEP. And have them comply with the total minimum or maximum daily load, which is a pollution standard. We should take, work towards getting all our lakes and streams off that list. Fifty percent by the next five years, a hundred percent in the next ten years, a good suggestion. Lake Jackson.
You're at almost three.
Okay, I'm almost done. Lake Jackson, we need to do something about Lake Jackson, again, take it off the impaired water body. One of my main things, let's develop a plan with property owners to retrofit old parking lots with tree islands and stormwater ponds. We have these old facilities, the new facilities are meeting standards, let's go in and retrofit the old facilities somehow, and work with the property owners, many property owners are interested. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And just in case, I have a copy.
Great, thank you, Grant. Thanks for coming out. Our next speaker.
Next speaker is Stanley Sims.
Mr. Sims.
Mr. Sims has filled out a form for the 2019 and review and the 2020 strategic plan, but I think we'll take all comments now because we're right at the transition.
Mr. Sims, we're going to do, we're going to do it all right now, three minutes, please, sir. Name and address.
I haven't been able to do it all at once, but I'm going to pray that I can get it done. My name, don't start the clock yet. Stanley Sims. I'm at 23, I'm at 1320 Avondale Way, I apologize, I'm having some medical issues this morning. My issue here today is, my issue of your priorities is, before I came up here, I spoke with my spiritual advisor, and he told me, he said, this is Martin Luther King's birthday, don't forget, you're dying, King. Martin Luther said that education was built on character. And so that's what I'm here about, representing the character of my community, because I believe the character of my community is at stake. We have a history here in Tallahassee where we cannot attract upper management minorities, nor can we retain them. And I will not allow the media to make this just about the police chief, because there, if we go back down memory lane, what about Anita Favors, who was skipped over for Skip Burkett, who we had to write him a check for almost $250,000, get rid of him, before Scott Maddox would acknowledge that Anita Favors could be the city manager of this town. Oh, let's not stop there. Look at our own, our top ten attorney. Number seven, Scott said, let's dummy down it, so some other applicants could get it. Oh, let's look at Cynthia. First, when Reese was appointed, he said he was not filling the deputy manager's position. I filed a complaint, that action was reversed. There are more, but I just took it up on the full flow. And to put our heads in the sand, I think is a great loss. And let me clear this up, and I'm so glad the chief is with us today. I love you, and I love your family. And I didn't say that in the cameras, I've said that to him personally. This is not about the person, this is about the process.
You're at about two minutes and forty-five.
I know it, and I'm going to dedicate them thirty seconds to Lonny Scott and Antonio Gillum. Those two black decorated officers. But I'm going to pose the question to this, look, and, and I was so disappointed, Ms. Blyant, when you said, I saw you on TV, because we voted for change, and you've got twenty years of HR experience, and if you could say that that process was fair and transparent, I'm disappointed.
You're at three minutes.
Okay, then, let me go into my seat. And what I'm saying is, if Anita Favors and, and Andrew Gillum would have went through two white officers to get to a black one that shot a white child in the head, we'd have a problem.
Thank you, Mr. Sims.
It wouldn't be this quiet.
Our next speaker, please.
We have one additional speaker, Mayor, that is Whitfield Leland, or possibly Leland Whitfield.
Thank you, Mr. Leland. Let me state for the record, as Mayor of Tallahassee, I am very pleased with the process that we had. I thought it was a very fair and open process, recognized as one of the best in the state of Florida, so. Mr. Sims, we are going to have order, and we are going to move forward with the process, sir. Our speaker, please.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Good morning.
If you'd give your name and address, then you'll have three minutes like the other speakers, and Mayor, I think this is the last, I know it's the last one to have a form for.
My name is Whitfield Leland, my address is 754 West 7th Avenue, Tallahassee, Florida, 32303.
Mr. Whitfield, pull the mic up some, so you're a little taller than he was.
Go ahead, sir.
I, I come before y'all this morning, after reviewing the strategic plan, first of all, I represent a group called Linkup, where we bridge- First of all, I represent a group called Link Up, where we bridge the gaps between the community. I think each and every one of y'all are familiar with some of the work we do with, helping out the, the, the black community. Reviewing the strategic plan, it's, it's still a gap in some of the areas that we need to reach in the black community. I feel that the program Tempo and TFLA, those are great programs, but when we really look at those programs, those programs only, only are for a Pacific age group. We have to, we have to be real, we have to be real and honest with ourselves. In the black community today, 28-year-olds are raising teenagers right now. You know what I'm saying? So, we have to find a connection in between. We also came up with a semi-type of program for our community as far as, and it's all volunteer-based, you know, and some of the things that we, some of the commissions, I've seen the proposals, some of them hasn't. But we feel like it's a, we need to connect more with our elderly. We've seen in the plan where it's the senior citizens is being built. At the end of the day, though, what about the people that don't have transportation, that don't have Medicaid to get, call to get them to the senior citizen place? They can just come right to the community centers. So, though we see the disconnect, we also see the need to manage our resources. It's a lot of resources out here. The only reason that they're not being taken, taken in is because they're not connected the right way. Or, one person may know about this resource, but it'd take hell, five bus stops to get to it, so that's kind of discouraging. When you're trying to really do the right thing, and then you got to work two jobs as a parent. As a single parent myself, it is very hard to have my son active in the community and work and try to make, make a life for him. So, what we're asking is, we're asking that the, that the city look at this proposal, and we're asking that the city, if it don't take some of it, it adopts a little bit of it. We're not trying to take out no programs the city has. For instance, Day Street, Day Street has a total of two programs right now, and one of them is home ec. They teach that on Friday. What we would do, we would come in and teach it Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and then they'll have it Friday. We're not trying to take over nothing, we're just trying to add and fill in the gaps. My name is Whitfield Leland. I represent Link Up. Y'all have a blessed day.
Mr. Leland, thanks for coming out. Appreciate it. Any other speakers?
No, sir.
Excellent, all right. Mr. City Manager, let's move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this part of the agenda, we're gonna move into the discussion about economic development. Before we do that, I think it's appropriate to, to have a few words from our airport director, David Pollard. David, if you'll come forward and, and welcome everybody and, and tell us what's going on at the airport today.
Well, thank you, Mr. City Manager, and I'd like to welcome the entire city management team, city commission, city attorney, treasurer clerk, and thank you to everybody. Yesterday, I think it's important to note, the highlight of my day yesterday, we announced a 12.5% increase in passenger traffic, closing out the year December over December. What that does for us, it puts us at the highest passenger activity levels since 2007. We're also well on our way this year, as we have a 5.9% increase in our passenger traffic already since the start of the fiscal year, which started one October, as you know. As we look at aircraft operations out and, out and about, we are also at an 8.7% increase in air traffic operations for the fiscal year to date at this point as well. As we look ahead to the new year, several projects that we'll be working on include the north-south runway design of that, and we'll be putting that out for bids. The international passenger processing facility, we are under design with that facility, and we'll be bringing you an update here in the very near future on that facility. We're also working with the rental car agencies on new quick turnaround facilities. This is the facilities they use to service and fuel those vehicles as they turn those around for our travelers and customers. We'll be working on air traffic control tower improvements, aircraft rescue and firefighting, building improvements. We'll be putting in new passenger boarding bridges, new flight information display system, and several other projects. I think I just wanted to give you a feel for the year ahead, as we are very excited about all that we have. Last year, one of our highlights, as we closed out our year in review, was that we drew in over $17.5 million of funding from our federal and state partners, and we're very, very proud of that. As we look ahead, the key message that I'm looking to convey is that we do face challenges associated with our aging infrastructure and preparing our sites for future development. So, aging infrastructure and site readiness are kind of my five key words I'd like to center on as well, so. But with that, I'll stop there. Like to remind everybody, we are providing free parking. If you haven't got your parking tickets validated, we've got the baskets out there, and staff is certainly ready to assist and all as we move ahead, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Mr. Mayor, we're gonna move to our economic development discussion led by Assistant City Manager Tedder.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good to see you, Wayne.
Let me just first start off, as we're talking about the economic activity of the community. We really need to kind of focus on a little bit of the background that kind of sets the stage for this. So, when we're talking about the population trends that we're seeing for our community, we're actually expecting 40,000 to 50,000 new people to come into our community within the next 25 years. And so, if you look at our current county population, it's almost 300,000 people. That's a lot of people. You'll go outside of that and look at our metropolitan area, it's 390,000 people. So, when I go into communities and I tell them that we're gonna grow that much, they say, "Well, that's just impossible." And so, when you go back and look at the history, and since 1940, every decade, we've grown over 20,000 people each decade. And then there were those decades between 1970 and 2010 where we had over 35,000. So, it's not an unreasonable expectation that we're gonna grow in our community. So, if you look at the physical size of our community, you look at how this Tallahassee has progressed, it's grown three and a half times in physical size since 1980. So, in 1980, we had a 29-square-mile city limits. Now, we're up to 103 square miles. When you talk about how are we gonna accommodate the people that are moving to our community, we're looking at some basic overall growth management strategies. This is by no means the details, but it's a high-level perspective of how we're intending to grow in our community. The urban service area means everything in how we promote our urban infrastructure, and it ties directly back to our strategic priorities and where we are intending to serve our urban infrastructure for our community. Generally, you can see, go back, we have a no-growth area where the national forest is, outside of the urban service area, we intend to see slow and no-growth areas, and then the urban service area, that's where we intend to capture most of the growth that occurs in our community. Now, if you look at it a little bit closer, as you kind of see these toggles go through for different areas, you see the urban service area, then you have the city limits lines, and then you have the downtown. As you move closer to that node in the downtown, as we anticipate to see greater and greater densities and intensities. Now, there's always exceptions. There's areas within our downtown and city that we're gonna preserve and keep them low intensity. There's also areas that are nodes, that we're gonna see very intense areas, and then we go out from those nodes in lower intensities. So, that's the general strategy. As our strategic plan, it focuses on our GDP and how we grow in our community. It's just a snapshot of the economy and, and how our economy is growing over time. There's four cornerstones: consumption of goods, government expenditures, this is your infrastructure spending, your schools and things like that, your net exports, and then your investments, which is a lot from the development projects, which is a lot of what I'll cover today. So, when you look at just a snapshot in time, if you pull up on the OEG's webpage, you see all the major developments that are occurring in our community. This is what you see real life, real-time information, and you see that there's 8,000 acres that are being looked at for development of some sort, over 10,000 dwelling units or bedrooms, and then over 4 million square feet of non-residential development, includes both commercial and office. So, we start trying to break that down into different segments. So, what I wanted to focus on first is residential. So, you see, we have 1,900 dwelling units under review, we have 1,300 dwelling units that are approved, and over 4,000 dwelling units that are under construction. So, let's start going through some of the examples. We look at Canopy. This development has approximately 1,300 dwelling units that have been previously approved, 219 dwelling units that are single-family that have been under construction over time or moving forward through construction. And if you look at just the map itself, the white areas are the single-family subdivision areas, that's single-family detached and attached. The orange is the multifamily development, and then inside the, the red colors are those areas that are, could be things like assisted living facilities, and we'll touch on some of those. So, moving to the multifamily development, Arbor Trace in Canopy, there's 300 multifamily dwelling units under construction and constructed. The next development we're looking at, combined with the Avery Park on Mahan Drive and the Brookside Village and Oxbottom Road, includes 47 dwelling units and 27, 2100, 21,000 square feet of non-residential development, office development. The next development, we have Camellia Oaks. This is also located on Mahan Drive. This includes 67 dwelling units that are under construction and is for, intended for and marketed for a 55 and older community. As you go into Evening Rose, this is one of those, it's been a sleeper subdivision for a while, and now it's kind of poured on very heavily in the last year. It's 69 dwelling units total in the neighborhood. There have been five under construction now, and there's 15 that were constructed last year. There's 387 dwelling units that comprise of the Grand Reserve at Capital Circle. This is behind the Sam's Club, the multifamily development, and then Lexington Park, which is on Appalachia Parkway, right across from the National Cemetery. We have 269 dwelling units that comprise with the Lowell Water Apartment Complex on Blairstone Road and the North Bend Subdivision that's located on Centerville Road, just south of, south of I-10. The next developments, we have 131 dwelling units. This is comprised of the Woodland Place Subdivision. Again, this is on Appalachia Parkway, and then the Retreat at Mahan, which is located at Mahan Drive and Highland Drive on, on Highland Drive, on Mahan Drive, Mahan. The next development we have is an assisted living facility. It consists of 108 units. This is 108 units that are in nine buildings, so you can imagine, do the math, there's 12 bedrooms in each one of those units, and this is located in the Villas of Kalaran. The next development has 32 dwelling units total, 27 have been completed, and we have five under construction, and this is the Villas of Mahan, right on Mahan Drive, across from Buckley. The next development is the Haven 17, oh, got an extra one in here. This is one that you're gonna hear about at your next CERA board meeting. They're gonna give you an update, so I don't wanna give too much details on that. They're still kind of programming it, but we're pretty excited about seeing the shelter properties redevelop on Tennessee Street and what they're gonna be bringing to that. Okay. The next one, we have Haven 17. This is 217 dwelling units. This is a redevelopment of Villa Sienna. This is on West Pensacola Street, near the Mellow Mushroom, on the south side of Pensacola Street. And a lot of these, when they're in the student housing developments, you consider, most of them are gonna be four-bedroom units, so you take that number and multiply it by four to understand the people that it will have living there. This one is the Vox Tallahassee. It's on Chapel Terrace redevelopment. This is taking an older apartment complex, 179 dwelling units. The next one is under review. This is the Field House on Gaines, right across from the FSU Stadium. It will include 100 dwelling units, and they're, they're moving forward quite fast, quite quickly on that. The next development, it looks like a soccer field of some sorts, but what we don't see is the vertical buildings here. This is a Pruitt Healthcare Skilled Nursing Facility. This is located on Orange Avenue in the Southwood Development, just east of Capital Circle. All right, so if we start moving into, going over the commercial developments that we have as of January 2020.
Before we go into that, real quick, Wayne.
Yes, sir.
Very excited about everything that's going on. Two questions. The largest majority of every development you just mentioned is happening on the east side of town, out Mahan or the Parkway, except for some of the student housing in northeast. I am assuming we work hand-in-hand with the school district to make sure that as we approve these projects moving forward with these large residential units, that we are keeping in mind the schools and the impact that we're having on the schools and...
Absolutely. I present to the school board and to their, they have another committee out there. I go and present this information to them every year.
Excellent.
And as a matter of fact, having served on the planning commission, the school board has a representative who sits on the planning commission to also make sure that that, that's taken care of as well.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Excellent. Final thought, at some point, I think that this board would be interested in seeing some type of analysis when it comes to student housing, of when this community hits a saturation point.
Okay.
What is that saturation point, and what is going on with the older, the older products that are in our market area? There's been some great suggestions on how to repurpose some of those.
Yep.
But yeah, I think that we'd be interested in knowing, okay, where exactly are we as a community with the student housing market? When is saturation point, and how do we move forward with the products that we have?
Okay. So, as we focus in on the commercial development that we have, 325,000 square feet under review, 300,000 approved, and over 1 billion square feet that's under construction. So, we, let's start with some of the developments. You have Tallahassee Orthopedic Clinic in the Canopy Development for a total of 58,000 square feet of medical office. The next one, and I think you're gonna start seeing a trend of these, as you see smaller homes in the community, people still have a need for stuff, and so we see in climate-controlled facilities, this one is on West Tennessee Street, 80,000 square feet that's under construction. I think you're gonna see others pop up in and around the community, so we have to be creative on how we address those needs for those residential developments.
Excuse me, Wayne, is that where the Tax World property is?
It's further west. Is it any closer to Appalachia, to Apple Yard Drive?
Yes, sir, it is. It's almost Apple Yard.
Okay, so, okay, 'cause Tax World is further west, it's almost?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So, the next one is the Hotel Indigo. This is on Gaines Street. It's 140 rooms. It has a restaurant, a rooftop bar, and some eating space. The next development, this one's under review. This is another hotel at Gaines Street, intersection of Gaines Street and Lorine Street, and they're proposing 162 rooms. This next development's quite, quite interesting. So, nowhere, according to the individuals that spoke to Reese and I when they came to Tallahassee, nowhere in the United States have they ever proposed two Chick-fil-A's closer than what you see on Tennessee Street. Nowhere. The volume at the one that exists on Tennessee Street is tremendous, and so they're trying to offset some of that volume, but they also understand they can capture some additional volume. So, this is a pretty, pretty cool experiment for them, and so they're about ready to start construction pretty soon. The next development, this is the Arena District, a mixed-use at the Civic Center. This has the potential to be a major game changer for our downtown, no doubt about it. We understand that they want to move forward with the first component, which is a hotel. Hopefully, we'll start seeing some of that progress by the end of this year.
Wayne, can you go back to that one?
Yes, sir.
Can you, can you describe where the convention center would be in this rendering?
It would be somewhere between the left and the right, the Civic Center and the building by Railroad Square. So, you see the one in the middle? I can't point to it. Somewhere in that general area.
So, the one, so I think we all recognize the Civic Center there in our, our top right corner, going immediately to the left of it, I think.
Yes, sir.
And then the hotel would be then left of that.
Yes, sir. All right, so the next development, this again, this is FSU. This is adding people, which is a key component to our downtown. We gotta get people to our downtown 24/7. Having this College of Business will do a lot of that. It's a five-story building, 218,000 square feet, 300-square-foot auditorium, and a multipurpose event space. This one, they're asking, they're, they're asking for legislation funding. Last year, they didn't get it, so they're moving forward with the next year, so hopefully they'll be successful this year.
And where's that gonna be, Wayne?
This is, so this is the chain of parks to your right, Gaines Streets to your left, and the Civic Center is just behind it. So, something else that's kind of telling you the investment that's going on to our community, we have a new credit union, Vistar Credit Union coming to Tallahassee. They are proposing three new locations on Tennessee Street, Mahan Drive, and Oxbottom Road. The next development, you have in Falls Chase, this is the Island Wings and a mixed-use development, proposes 24,580 square feet, and that's approved, waiting for construction. The next development, this is one that was recently completed. As you start seeing what's happening at the intersection of Thomasville Road and I-10 and Capital Circle, you're going to see a lot of things happen up in that area. And so, with Capitol Health Plan opening up this year, 72,000 square feet, we've got a couple developments I'll hit in general. we've got a couple of developments I'll hit in just a few minutes in that area. Okay, next. So maybe not the greatest concept for the mall space, but it's something that puts people in that mall space is the conversion of four hundred and fifty thousand square feet of the building to office space. What it will do is put a lot of people in that area. So businesses have an opportunity to grow around that population that they will be serving during the daytime hours.
Now, when you say the mall, you're talking about the center of Tallahassee.
Center of Tallahassee, yes, sir.
Not the property that we own.
No, sir, not ours. Okay, the next one, again, a lot of investment going on this project, the Cascades Development. They started off with a ninety million dollar investment. They have now moving forward, they got their full board approval to add another sixty million dollar component. So you're going to see pretty much the entire site built out at the conclusion of this project. It includes hotels, office, residential, both apartment and condos, has restaurants, an amphitheater or support space that will be our space to use and operate at the theater, and two hundred and fifty parking spaces for our use for the area, public parking. And then this is just the ground level. And I think what really is important to recognize is we got the twenty-four acre park right beside it. We wanted to bring that park throughout the development, so that's what you see that spying through there. Not only does it keep the vista of our downtown from the amphitheater, it also extends the park into the project. Next two developments, not really large, but it's things that are happening on Capital Circle Southeast. You've got the Highland Office Buildings. And then you have Infinity, that's kind of filling in the vacant parcel in front of Craft Nissan on Mahan Drive. Kind of going back to what's happening at Thomasville Road, I-ten, Capital Circle intersection. About two years ago, the City Commission approved the Comp Plan Amendment to allow greater intensity for this piece of property. It's the old Osaka Restaurant Restaurant, correct? So what they did was bought out Osaka. Osaka got time to go build in another location. We'll see, you just saw it on the next slide. But to make room for this hundred and eighty room hotel. And so thus you have Osaka, I believe, based on what I saw in some of the public comment the other day, it's still, it's opened up and it's eighty-five hundred square feet. So the developer actually allowed for that transition to occur.
I'm surprised they didn't let me know they moved us.
All right, so the next one we're pretty excited about, as we talk about midtown and the sense of place issues that we deal with, the Mixed Use Development, this is an existing five-story building going in, one more click. It kind of gives you the visual of what it's intended to be over time.
That's great.
So both some restaurant, retail and office space in there. So hopefully that'll be a major improvement for that district. Okay. So now we have, at the entrance of Railroad Square, we have a hundred and twenty room hotel and over six thousand square foot of retail. That's under construction. This is right adjacent to the FAMU Way and the Capital Cascades Trail. The next one, Market District. Anyone can see that it's undergoing a major facelift on some of those buildings. There's been new buildings that will be constructed, thirty-two thousand square foot movie theater and over twenty thousand square feet of retail. The hotel that you see on the left kind of dropped off the radar over time, but I expect that will come back in the near future. The next development, again, out in Canopy. This is an entertainment center, like you see a Dave and Buster's type facility or the one up to, what is the one up in? Hangar Thirty-Eight. It's forty-three thousand square foot entertainment facility, another forty-eight thousand square foot of mixed use office and retail space and a six thousand restaurant. Six thousand square foot restaurant. This is one of the first developments that kind of sprung out on Mahan Drive. It's a Mahan Office Park, kind of seemed like it was out in the middle of nowhere. And then you start seeing, Mayor, as you indicated, a lot of things are just growing around Mahan Drive. It's going to result in a hundred and eight thousand square feet of office, professional office space. This next one, we're seeing this outside our windows every day at City Hall, the Capitol Memorial Park. I don't know if you've been able to go see what's already been completed as far as the physical improvements, but it's going to look fantastic for the Capitol complex. It's going to be an incredible amenity for our downtown and for the historical and cultural things that happen in the state of Florida. So you see the canvas will be here, they'll come back and do the commemorations afterwards. They're expecting this component that you see on the north side of the building to be completed September of this year. After that, then they start moving to the back of, on the west side of the state Capitol for the final segment.
Wayne, before you move forward.
Yes, sir.
So when we talk about the Capitol facilities, this is going to be absolutely incredible. It's going to bring people downtown. And as we continue the discussion about the master plan in downtown Tallahassee, we have got to get serious about public facilities in downtown. Because if we keep bringing people downtown and there's no restrooms that are available besides City Hall and the Public Library, we got a big issue. So as we move forward with master planning downtown Tallahassee, we have got to make sure that one of the priorities is public facilities. So that people have a place to go use the restroom and wash up. And it's not just the Capitol, City Hall.
And not the places that they're using now.
Correct. That will help, that will help quite a bit, I believe, with some of the issues that we're dealing with. So let's make sure, and I just say that because you brought up the development down at the Capitol area. I mean, this is great, but as we bring people down, we've got to evolve as well.
And Mayor, I agree with you wholeheartedly because, you know, when we, when we, I reflect back on our visit to Greenville, South Carolina, and I think about cities like Savannah, Georgia and Charleston, South Carolina, and there are others, lots of others. We had some discussion about even Gainesville, how they've now made their downtowns walkable and livable. And they're starting to draw people to those downtown areas. And I think we have that same opportunity here in Tallahassee, especially with developments like this and our Chain of Parks and other developments that will be happening. And we're starting to create that density, I think, with Cascades, Washington Square, whenever it eventually comes online, Four Forty North. So we're starting to, I think, create the density to encourage that kind of thing. But like I said, we've got to start taking advantage of what the possibilities are for our downtown.
I agree.
Okay. Next developments, so we have a couple of community facilities, not large scale, but again, talking about Eaton and Rose and how it continues to grow, eighteen thousand square foot addition to the existing Leadership Academy facility out there. And then again, another out at near Canopy, the Holy Comfort School, twenty-three thousand square foot addition. Now, as we go back, next one. Now, as we talk about another block of the public facilities and how it impacts our GDP and our economy. FAMU Way, well underway construction, fully completed, hopefully with improvements with the stormwater added to it by summer of twenty twenty-one. And kind of adding to that, other infrastructure, Reese mentioned it this morning, the Weems Road, north and south, between the sidewalks, the water sewer, gas, electric, stormwater, Capitol Project, all of those tie to our GDP. All of those are so important to make sure that we invest in our community. Okay, moving to the airport, and as David mentioned, the highest growth rate that we've seen since two thousand and seven.
Wayne, before we get to the airport.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any type of update on Washington Square? I mean, we all read that they had paid off their liens and hopefully moving forward. Do we know of, I mean, it's a private development, but do we know of any other?
Carl is in the bag, they seem to have a scoop on what's going on downtown. From the Democrat.
Sandra.
We have had no update from Washington Square Fairmont as to what has been going on, or what, if anything. Although we had, we did get information from the person, I believe, who is their lobbyist, that they had paid off at least ten million dollars of the debt.
And the article was very promising, that was great. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No problem. So again, the airport is a major focus to our strategic plan. The plan grows for growing our economic impact of airport from seven hundred and fifty million to a billion. Part of that is generating new traffic in our community. So as we look at this, we're going to be focusing on the airport traffic. So the next one, so David and his staff worked exceptionally fast to try to design the international processing facilities. The key to this, again, one of our requirements in our strategic plan is to have this under construction in twenty twenty-four. This would allow us to shift and receive goods and services and people anywhere to and from the world. So when you talk about economic development and activity, this will be a major boost for our community and our economy. Looking at air cargo, again, another component of our strategic plan, trying to grow that air cargo. And I think those things will progress as we start working with the development of our master plan for our airport as well as the international facilities. Then lastly, regarding the airport, our team's been working with a group that the mayor has assembled. We want to be ready, set, go for properties that come in, and they're challenging us. They say, hey, if we come in with a development application, how fast can you do this and can it happen? So we're kind of going through that, we're working through all the issues. And we'll be coming back in the near future with some plans and recommendations to kind of work through some of those issues. But I think we're well suited to take on any development that wants to come to Tallahassee at the airport. I included a couple of blueprint slides because this is part U-Two. And this makes very important, we're talking about, you heard some of the things, connectivity, the bicycle routes, the greenways in our community. So important to the quality of life for our community as well as economic development. So blueprints, moving forward with fifteen million dollars over twenty years to connect these areas with the bike route system. You will be seeing in the near future a bike pad master plan update that will be coming through the CRA TPA. We've got an exceptional alignment of facilities in our community. But what they're doing is looking at how you connect those neighborhoods and businesses, and connect those neighborhoods to businesses and neighborhoods to neighborhoods. This also ties into your priority that we are going to build an equivalent of ten sidewalk projects per year. We're well underway to meet that goal this year.
Wayne, if you'll pause there, and it was mentioned earlier that we, as we move to a gold rated bicycle community, this certainly does that for us. I think, I think we can get there and that's consistent with your direction.
Absolutely. So what we saw over time, when we got evaluated for the classification for silver or bronze, they said where we were lacking the most is the dollars to go towards these types of facilities. Blueprint put those dollars in as part of our tax process. We put those numbers on there to generate a well-connected bicycle pathway system.
Real quick, so Wayne, while we talk about the trails, two other things to keep in mind. Number one, I know that I think we are hosting this year the first massive mountain biking festival in Tallahassee that's coming up out of Tamara Park, which is very exciting. There is a huge festival that takes place down in Ocala every year that attracts literally tens of thousands of people. And there's a group of those founders that are interested in doing some type of festival with our trail system as well. As we move forward, obviously there's two different types of people that come to mind immediately. Those are actually commuting by bike and those that are recreational bike on the trails. One thing that I think we should keep in mind, and I actually think it impacts the county more than the city, we do have a lack of primitive camping sites at our parks. The appropriate parks for specifically people that come for the weekend to mountain bike. I'm not familiar with this, but this is actually a huge deal. There's a whole industry of people that love to come, pitch a tent at an appropriate park. Again, I think it impacts the county more than the city. Where you have a campsite, you pitch a tent, you ride all day and you come back. It's just something to consider as we move forward with the county, how when we're putting the network together, we're conscious of the fact of that there is an industry that loves the primitive camp. As far as I know, right now, there's one landing out on Lake Taquen that allows primitive camping for the county. We don't allow any primitive camping unless it's a specific festival or something, I guess, that they would have to go through that process. So it's something to keep in mind. Even to the point to, you know, hold out, you've got people that bring their campers, their trailers, and they want to stay for the weekend and do all the outdoor activities, bring a canoe, bring a bike. If we're really going to push for all of the eco-adventure industry, we've got to have the infrastructure in place. Part of that infrastructure is appropriate camping facilities. Just keep that in mind as we move forward.
As a camper, it's a great idea.
Okay.
All right, so again, going to that connectivity between your bike routes, your sidewalks, now your greenways. You have funding to start implementing your greenways master plan that we have, twenty million dollars over twenty years. Okay, next. Now, talking about investment in our south side, Orange Avenue Meridian, moving forward, four point one million dollars to address, add additional facilities, not only for our parks areas, but also for our mass transit facilities in that area and provide that greater connectivity to the south side residents. Then we have the Market District, nine point four million dollars of blueprint money. That's on top of what the city of Tallahassee has already put in to start designing and constructing some of the stormwater improvements that were necessary to implement this. And that has, a lot of that has been completed to date. Then you look at South Monroe Adams Corridor Placemaking, seven million dollars will be going through this area to connect these areas and to make South Monroe more visually pleasing and connecting to, across the street to the neighborhoods.
Wayne, are we working with FAMU? I know for a long time we were trying to get their completed master plan, which I think has been done. Are we working with them? Because I know they were interested in pushing out the entrance to FAMU from South Adams to Monroe. Are we still looking at that kind of connectivity with FAMU?
So we saw some opportunities about two years ago when we presented those to them. They didn't connect at that point. But their master plan is in process of being updated. It will come before you all. I haven't had any conversation. I know their facilities person who was responsible for processing those, he left recently. So that's probably making a little bit of difference while we've not heard from him recently. But they were getting close to completing their master plan and bringing it back to us for review and comment.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, so we're looking at now the Midtown Sense of Place, over twenty-two million dollars will be invested in that area to beautify, to have the sidewalks, the landscaping, and to just make it a more aesthetically pleasing component of our community. And I could go on and on, commissioners, but thank you for the time. And if there's any information that you'd like for me to follow up on, I'd be glad to provide that to you.
Commissioner.
I was going to say, Wayne, I don't know if this was the place for it, but the development, the things that are happening in the Bond community with the use of CRA funds.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this, would this be the place where that should go?
So at your January thirtieth CRA meeting, you're going to have a full update on Bond, French Town, as well as the French Town Redevelopment Properties and Four Forty. So we've got a lot of other projects that are coming forward and you'll have a full analysis and what's happening, an update then.
Okay, thank you. The other thing I wanted to note was that is, to me, is very obvious because, you know, it depends on your viewpoint, it's from where you sit. There's a lot of commercial development going on all around town and around the, around south side, on the outskirts, Capital Circle and things like that. What is it, and I know we're doing a lot of infrastructure improvements to, I guess, to make some of those properties attractive, but what are we hearing from developers as to why they're not coming in?
The history that I have had with the developers have always been concerned about the schools and the qualities of the schools on the south side. That's been the most, what I've seen from the developers is they're concerned about the schools.
Okay, well, let me send this message to the developers. Because when they develop residential areas, they determine the quality of the school. Because they determine where the school is going to be, the cost of the homes and all those kinds of things. So if that's a concern, come help, make the schools better by coming in to do your part to help make the schools better. Because what's missing are resources. And so if you're waiting for the school to get better before you come in, it's not going to happen if you don't come in to help make it better. So I'll send that message. I know they're listening, they're watching, happy to discuss it with anyone who wants to talk about it. But we're, it's too long we've been saying, we got to wait for you to do this. And then we do it and then you move on to somewhere else. So at some point, someone's going to have to take and just step out on faith and come help develop and make these schools better. And it's not that the schools are bad. The children are not bad, the teachers are not bad. They need resources. We need resources that the other, other parts of town may have. And they're getting it freely, but on the, on the south side of town, we're having to ask consistently. And some get it and some don't. So.
Yes, ma'am.
We're encouraging the developers to come on in and help us make them better.
I will say this, and this is exactly what you all are doing from my vantage point, is every time you have public investment into a community, people and development people respond to that. You look at what happened at Cascade, you're looking at what happened at FAMU Way. I think all of those things that you are doing to invest in those parts of the community, the French Town, I mean, the Orange Avenue, you will see that investment turn around and other developers are going to get excited about what's going on in those communities, regardless of what the conditions are with the schools or anything else. So your public investment alone goes a long ways to starting that, that conversation up and moving development in those portions of the community.
And we certainly do appreciate that, but developers can also lead and we can collaborate with them.
Commissioner Richards.
Thank you, Mr. Vera. And Commissioner Williams Cox, you beat me to the point because it's glaring that, and I've seen it, you know, in all the years that I've lived in Tallahassee, you know, this kind of development, and it's exciting. I mean, there is a lot happening in our wonderful all-America city, but for some people, it's not happening. And it happens to be in the area where I live. And I couldn't sit here and not bring that point. sit here and not bring that point to light, because I don't see that for Orange Avenue. I don't see it for the Jake Gaither community. And, and, and what we have done in the past, having served on the blueprint committee, I know that when you put the appropriate infrastructure in place, as you've talked about, Wayne, you, you encourage that kind of development.
That is correct.
In, in a lot of instances, we lack that kind of infrastructure, and so we've got to now put an emphasis on putting first that infrastructure in place. I think the widening of Capital Circle around from the airport, from Orange Avenue to, to Crawfordville Highway is going to be huge in that respect. The southwest gateway projects that we've got, Orange Avenue widening from Lake Bradford Road to Capital Circle, Spring Hill Road, that's going to help. But we certainly have got to put much more emphasis on providing the appropriate infrastructure, and that will encourage the development. Now, Orange Avenue is going to help. That's going to be transformational, but still we've got to have the, the infrastructure, the transportation infrastructure, the sidewalks, we've got to have more discussion, mayor, about developing the fairgrounds now. That has to come into play, because that can be transformational from the south side, for the south side of town. But that's where we've, we've got to put our focus and establish some priorities, because we can't, we can't sit here and see this community grow as it's growing and then see none of that coming to a certain segment of our community. And I'm, I'm, if this community allows me to serve it again as a city commissioner, I tell you, that's where I'm going to be coming from, and as a resident, and almost 30-year resident of the south side of Tallahassee, we've got to make that happen.
Curtis, follow up on your point. You know, you've shown a lot of leadership, especially on the infrastructure problems down there. You've been talking about Silver Lake for quite some time and how it impacts the Gaither community, especially the flooding. We know that the Gaither community is very interested in some type of an overhaul of the city of Silver Lake Park down there, putting in a better dock, putting in some sidewalks. I think that's also a great opportunity, leading into 2020 is one of the projects to look at, is the Silver Lake Park. Look, we're spending all this money on the connection with water, okay? We just had the blueprint issue. Silver Lake ties right into Lake Henrietta as well, and it impacts all of the flooding issues that handles down there, so I think it's a great opportunity. To your point, Mayor Proton, I think it's great. I propose also, and then we'll come back and, and get you, I think we should have a joint meeting. We meet with the county all the time.
Yeah.
We should have a joint meeting with the school board and just sit down and do a half-day workshop.
Sure.
And everybody at the table and talk about these issues, and what are we doing that's positively or negatively impacting the school district? What can the school district do as well? And I think that 2020 would be a great year to host that meeting.
Okay, I should have spoken before you talked, that's where I was going.
I read your notes from here.
Okay, obviously, but let, let me say that I'm not going to repeat, because I'll just say ditto to, to the two commissioners that spoke before me, but we need to actually put that as a part of the plan. The vision should be, we should have some kind of vision of what this will look like at the end of 2020, because it's going to take everybody coming to the table, the developers, the school board, this commission, the county, we need to start working on the two Tallahassees into one, and I think this will be a very, very good start. And at some point, we, we probably should move away from why this can't happen and start talking about incentives to make it happen.
Correct.
Because people, including developers, react to incentives.
I agree.
And we incentivize other things. I think it's going to be critical if we're going to do something and not have a picture painted of the two Tallahassees where we developed one side of town but did not the other, that we have to be intentional.
Commissioner Mattler?
Yeah, thank you. I want to address the education point. Thousands of teachers across our state came to the Capitol and supported public education and to push for more funding. I think as a community, as a city, we can, we can push for that at that level. But I do want to dispel a rumor about south side schools in general. I attended Oak Ridge Elementary School, I attended Fairview Middle School, and I'm sitting here on the city commission, so the opportunity for anybody at any of our schools isn't limited just because of the school that they went to, and if that's a hindrance to development, we do need to have a further conversation. I'd also want to point out, I see Ben Penigree in the back leveraging opportunities. We're all about leveraging opportunities. I think this commission's ready to see some real developments happening in the south side. Let's reach out, let's see where we can put our public resources, invest in it, make the commitment, and bring more partners in to see those areas grow.
Excellent. Wayne? All done.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you very much. Moving on, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. We'll move to our public safety section. Cynthia Barber will open this, and we'll, we'll try to make up some time, but, but I think this discussion's been very good, so I'll turn it over to Cynthia.
Thank you, Cynthia Manager. Mayor Commissioners, I won't be before you long, and it's my job to, to open a discussion about public safety, and as you know, the overarching goal for public safety is to create the safe, resilient, and inclusive community. And the city manager in his previous comments, I hope provided you some assurance that we're making great progress in that regard. We've achieved quite a bit last year, and we're very focused on this year. The two things that I'll mention, since he's mentioned several of them, I want to talk real briefly about the, which were two really important things that we are, we have in the process of achieving and working towards is the selection of our police chief, and the, and then the public safety campus of the police headquarters, which will be also very important to the work we do in public safety. Just real briefly, for those who are not as familiar with the, with the process that was used to select the police chief, I wanted to highlight that just a moment, particularly since it was mentioned earlier. We couldn't be prouder of the process that we, that we utilized to select the chief. We said six months ago that we would hire a police chief, and we, and we said it would be in January. It was a very engaged process, more than any other position that we've selected in this government. We had over 1,000 touchpoints in the process from citizens in this community, including online feedback from the public regarding the chief candidates. We had support from a community panel of professionals who to work very closely with the chief to participate in the process. We, for the first time, had the chief candidates to present to the community and receive feedback. Normally, there's a small internal process than an introduction of the chief to the community, and in this case, we worked at just the opposite. The community fed into that process and put forth the three candidates, and we said we would get the best chief for the city of Tallahassee, and without hesitation, I say today that I believe once again we delivered.
Yes.
Very excited about working with Chief Revel and his team. You'll hear from him, I won't steal any of his thunder, like the city manager stole all of mine. I'm going to let him tell you about the progress he's made. He's been on the job for really, I guess, about a week officially, but you'll hear about the progress that we're making, and in the meantime, we know that in order to support the chief and the excellent work that the men and women in the police department do for us every day, that they'll need a facility, a state-of-the-art facility from which to do their work. We will be more engaged with the community, our department will be more reflective of our community and consistent with yours and the city manager's goals of diversity and inclusion. I'll let him tell you about it. We'll be coming before you at the end of the month, the 29th, asking for your approval to move forward with the police headquarters. As you know, we started with 68 sites, we're down to two sites. You asked us to further, receive further feedback, and in both of these processes, the selection of the chief, as well as the public safety campus of police headquarters project, transparency and engagement have been really critical in this process. We held two community meetings here recently. We received a resounding feedback regarding the community's feelings on where the, the police department should be located. As you know, the Norfolk Mall is a, is the top site that's been recommended. We'll be asking you to, to finalize a site for us. We'll go back and do more planning for the site, more engagement, and start to really bring in that project to fruition so that the chief and his team can have a state-of-the-art facility that supports the community policing that, that we are committed to. So with those brief comments, you'll hear from two of the folks who contribute, because you know that police, the police department alone can't get it done, the city alone can't get it done, but we are fortunate to have some of the key partners in creating a safe community. You won't hear from all of them today, like Ben and her team, you won't hear from her, you won't hear from Ashley, Parks and Rec. We know that is a very important connection to what we do with our use and the role that we play in our community centers and, and how we, how we need to work better together for that. But you're here from our police chief first, and then you're here from Kimba Thomas and about the tempo program, and we just couldn't be prouder and more excited about the work that they've done and what I know will get done. So with that said, city manager?
Thank you, Deputy City Manager. Let's welcome Chief Revel to the podium to share his vision and thoughts for this year and forward.
All right. Chief Revel, great to see you. Thanks for joining us.
Good to see you too, Mayor. Commissioners, thank you for being here. I am incredibly excited to share with you what we've accomplished in our whopping nine days in office, but I will tell you, we have made great strides already, and I am incredibly excited to stand before you. So I want to make sure though, that I give you city manager go, you deputy city manager, Barber, Mayor, Commissioners, you have been nothing but supportive, 100% supportive of us and everything that we're trying to do to build this department for the future. And as we've talked about, building and moving that 15, 20 years down the road and preparing for that, we're doing the same thing within the police department to prepare, to prepare for those changes that are coming. So if you'll bear with me just a minute, I'm going to share some of those things with you. I attended all of our check-ons and bureaus meetings and have been to just about everywhere within the department, and there is an excitement at the police department that there hasn't been for years. I jokingly talk about our day shift, you know, guys, because that's our older workers, and typically, you know, they're, they're not the happiest group, but even in that group, very, very positive, very excited about the changes that are coming. We are working hard to make sure that they enjoy the work that they're doing, you know, that they get fulfillment out of that. And one of the things we did in that meeting is not only share a vision for, for where the department's going, which I've shared much of that with the community already, but we listened. We, we listened to what they had to say, and it's amazing how, I call them, you know, they're small wins, but how small wins can have such a dramatic impact on morale within the department. So we've done some things like, you know, addressing some of the uniform concerns, especially as it relates to our civilian employees, and they couldn't be more excited about that. You know, some of the areas which we've taken in the police department and just, you know, at almost no cost, made those areas more comfortable for, like our investigators that might be working a case around the clock, so we've kind of created a lounge-type area for them. You know, just some of those small wins have just made a tremendous difference. But I really want to talk to you about just a couple of major advancements that we have accomplished in these nine days. First and foremost being, I finished all the interviews yesterday for deputy chief, and I am proud to say that this afternoon, we will do a press release announcing who those deputies are.
Oh, man! I think they call it a teaser, right? But you will be very excited when you see who those people are. Strong, strong leadership that are going to add instantly to the police department and will directly address some of the major concerns that you all had and that I had as to the makeup of my command staff, so you're going to be excited about that.
Cliffhanger.
We also, you know, I don't want to say historic, but we had a meeting yesterday with the PBA. As you know, or I'm sure you probably know, for almost two years, we have not been able to get anything accomplished where, when it comes to our assessment center, and that directly affects the police department's ability to promote lieutenants and sergeants. Not command staff per se, but the boots on the ground, the ones that are actually doing the work, and that dramatically affects, you know, the services that we provide to our community. That has been a contentious battle, like I say, for over two years. We met with the PBA yesterday, we agreed on the basic premise of an MOU, which should be written today, and that'll be presented to the PBA board next week and voted on the following week. So we hope that within three weeks, we will have a signed MOU which will allow us to promote sergeant and lieutenant within the police department. That is a tremendous accomplishment. So I, I. Good work, good work on that. Well, that's, that's the men and women of my command staff and the PBA, and just the willingness to come forward, and honestly, it's, it's the stability, you know, which we've talked about and which we've needed for so long at the police department, and that is sensed in the police department, and again, with that excitement, there's a willingness to work together to push this department forward. So again, just a tremendous accomplishment that we're extremely excited about. So you'll see that coming. That will be a stopgap until we get to our assessment center, which we are doing and moving forward with. That has been funded and approved, and, and that test will actually, the first test for that assessment center will take place in late April. So this MOU will be effective up until that test date, but we will have something in place that we can move forward until that time, when the assessment center actually takes over. Let's see, I'm also, starting today, we will be advertising for the major vacancies. That'll be a one-week process internal. I am incredibly excited, I keep saying that word, I'm incredibly excited, everybody's excited, but I have personally talked to many members within our department, I've shared this with several of you, that for various reasons in the past have not felt led to, to put in for positions, and now they are. So we opened that process back up, it is very inclusive, there's an excitement about people coming onboard and applying for those positions that have chosen not to in the past, and so again, we are pushing forward, that's going to be, you know, a very short turnaround on that as well, so we'll be coming with those names shortly, just filling out the command staff. So thank you again for your support as I build out that command staff, and as we look to some, adding some other positions, I don't want to give all those away right now, because we're still working through those. So when those, when you see those, please approve them, so that we can continue this momentum, so that, so that we can keep those, keep those moving forward. We have been busy in the community. We've done one meet and greet, and that was at Hylandman, just a great event, and we're doing another one at the Sumacolum Center at Lafayette on the 30th. I went to an event, and I told him I was going to say it, he told me Saturday, so when I say hubba bubba, don't get mad at me. He told me not to say his other name ever again. So, but I went to that event of, of link up, and when I, as I've gone through this process, and if we stood before you, we continually talk about having real conversations about real issues, and I can tell you, Saturday, we had some of those real conversations. We talked about teen pregnancy, we talked about drug use, we talked about fear of the police, we talked about getting back to anti-drug marches that we used to do in our community, and, and officers just getting out and playing football and basketball, you know, with kids in, in the community, and, and we are going to get back to those things. So I thank you for inviting me to that, I thank you for the conversations that we had there, and as we continue to meet with the public, we're going to continue those type of conversations. So I'm all about, you know, coffee with a cop and shaking hands and all, but I'm much, much more about us having those real conversations and coming alongside everybody in this community to address our issues of poverty and teen pregnancy and infant mortality and those issues that are so prevalent in our community. I attended the Leadership Tallahassee, which is just a great group that's very supportive of law enforcement, and Youth Leadership Tallahassee yesterday, and our future is bright. That was a great group that represented our entire community, they asked fabulous questions. Chief Gaines was there, the sheriff was there, as well as our EMS chief, and just again, great conversations with the youth in our community. We had a historic meeting with the Democrat and talked about how do we work together? And honestly, that's, you know, as far as I know, that's a conversation that hasn't happened in a long time. Again, very, very positive, forward movement, so I look forward to working with all of our media as we work through issues, and I know we've had some of those recently, and we're continuing to review those policies as they relate to how we have historically done business. So I know my. So I know my time is short, so...
City Advisory Committee?
Yeah, I've got, I was gonna say, I've got a couple more things, and I'm gonna jump some of this stuff in here to talk about. Next week, we will emphasize our Citizen Advisory Committee. You've heard me talk about it. I'm meeting with Pastor Ferguson next week, and we will begin the advertisement of that. You will see that come out shortly after that, and then the selection of that committee. I can tell you, I've got a whole folder set aside where I've already gotten tons of interest, people that want to be a part of that community, I mean, of that committee. So that will be moving very quickly as well. We're also doing an internal one, and one of the positions which I'll be asking for will directly oversee that internal committee and the fact that we need within the police department to have systems in place to, so that when new people come into new positions, they're not reinventing the wheel, or they're not learning on the fly. There should be systems in place to tell them, here's what you do, here's how you do it, here's where you go for this information. And so that position will be directly responsible for creating that for our entire department, and that's gonna be a heavy lift, that's gonna take several years, but that's the direction we have to go in as we're moving forward. Lastly, and you've heard me talk about it, I'm incredibly excited, and I'm not gonna steal his thunder, because he and I talked about it, so he gets to do all the...
Feel it, feel it.
He gets to do all, no, he gets to tell you about it, but our partnership with the Tempo program is going to be groundbreaking. We are incredibly excited to create a community service officer positions, which will allow Tempo graduates to move into those positions, then on to full-time officer positions, and eventually mentors within their community, back where they grew up, just like I did. So we're excited about that. I'm gonna let Dr. Thomas talk about that, because I told him I wouldn't steal too much of his thunder, but that partnership is gonna be great, so.
Yeah, before we get started, I know we all probably have some questions. Go ahead, Commissioner.
In terms of your Citizen Advisory Committee, chief, I would recommend that, and I know you want to make it as inclusive of the community as possible, but to ensure that we have someone from the Jewish community represented on that, because we're seeing lots of antisemitism happening in our country now.
Right.
Some extreme antisemitism, so we want to have that.
Muslim community?
The Muslim community, the LGBTQ community, and we have a large Indian and Asian community, but seldom do we get them involved. I'd like to see us reach out to those communities as well and have them represented on that community.
Yeah, it will be, it will be an inclusive group, for sure. I had an interesting conversation the other night, very open and honest conversation with a young lady that was with an atheist group in town. And again, her whole thing was, we just want to be included, and I said, absolutely, you know, this is about our entire community, so it will be. Thank you.
So chief, let me tell you, I could not be more thrilled that you are chief.
Thank you.
We, as a body, have worked for a solid year. We've been through, you're our third police chief in one year. It was a challenging year last year.
Yes.
You are the right person.
Is it us? I say, did you guys...
You are the right person at the right time for this community, and we back you 150%.
Thank you.
So a couple of thoughts real quick, and I've said this to you, but let me just bring it all, since we're all together on the record. Violent crime is an issue that we have to address here in this community. There's different elements, a lot of it is not law enforcement, it's also community elements, but specifically where it touches the Tallahassee Police Department, okay? We have to hire officers.
Correct.
We have to hire officers so that you have a full department, okay? So that you can properly move forward and move this community forward.
It's vital.
I am interested to know, and I want you to think outside the box, what do we need to do to assist you to be able to hire more officers? Give you a prime example. We've got an issue when, if I've got other jurisdictions, whether it's sheriff or whether it's state, that are allowing their officers or deputies to have more take-home pay than our officers, that's gonna be a hiring problem for us. So we have had talks on our end, I've talked to Jim Cook and Reese in particular about we need to, as we move into collective bargaining, how do we look at pay? How do we look at benefits? How do we get creative? How do we put the package together on top of all the beautiful things of Tallahassee to attract people to come to Tallahassee? Whatever we can do to help, we want your suggestions on hiring. Number two, your assets, technology. What can we do to help fight crime in this community? What is the 21st century assets out there that we are not employing, that we should be employing, whether it's, I don't know, software, whatever? We are looking to you and your team to give those recommendations. Some of them might be big-ticket items.
They are very big, but we've identified them.
Right. I understand, but we have to have that conversation to make sure that we have a 21st century police department, that is for sure. I'm interested in, and not right now, but when times appropriate or even in writing, I'm interested in your management philosophy specifically towards non-sworn officers within the police department. I have made it very clear that if it's not a life-threatening situation with no physical harm, when you have a traffic accident, which basically we have to fill out the report for the insurance purposes, we should be more creative, and instead of taking the time of a sworn officer, maybe we come up with a civilian corps that can handle some of those responsibilities. Other communities across the country do this. I think it's a great management practice. I think you share that philosophy.
I do.
So how do we move forward with building up that civilian corps to be able to handle some of the other responsibilities that traditionally have been held by your officers right now? I am extremely interested to hear your thoughts in the future about our partnerships. Obviously, we have a lot of jurisdictions here. One in particular, I know the president of Florida State came out with his interest in the urban partnership.
Yes, sir.
And the role that we can play in a positive fashion with both FAMU police, Florida State police, Texas Community College police, because let's face it, a lot of times, your violent crime will happen around the university communities, and especially if we look at other university communities, they're experiencing the same.
Sure.
It's important for us to have those strong relationships. I am extremely interested in your department also taking the lead and working with Cynthia and senior management on putting together a very positive action plan on how, holistic action plan on how we are going to deal with those experiencing homelessness in our community. I do not believe that we should just arrest people that are hanging out in the parks, but yet we have to have a comprehensive plan to address those that are experiencing homelessness, okay? And so I want to put that on your radar. There are departments that have properly trained their officers and have specific units that deal with nothing but those that are experiencing homelessness with other amazing people that work for us at City of Tallahassee and those departments.
And we've had some of those conversations, so we're moving forward that way.
Great. But I think we need to have a formal game plan to be able to move forward in order to deal with that. You touched on your management and your command structure, and I'm really excited about the announcements that you have coming. I'll still give you the opportunity if you want to do it right now, but nonetheless. I'm also very excited about your Citizens Advisory Committee. I think it is long overdue, and I think it's gonna help you, the city, and bring a lot of trust back in the community as well. Finally, and this is the big one, the police department. I have made it very, very public, my interest in Northwood Center for a police headquarters, but I've also made it very clear that I don't want this community to get in any type of debate of this or that. I am very strongly in favor of building an incredible 21st century facility as well on the Lake Bradford property in conjunction with the new fire department, a new, if it's a community center or whatever we term to call it, I think that there's the opportunity to do both. In fact, I am interested in hearing your management philosophy on a 21st century police department. Is it the right time now, as we're doing major capital investment, to truly consider a real precinct model, not a substation, but a precinct model? And if so, should we, in long-term thinking, be thinking about, okay, we're gonna build a headquarters? Right now, it's either gonna be Lake Bradford or Northwood, okay? Do we do a headquarters? Do we do a southern precinct and with future plans of an east and a west precinct, or another north precinct? This is the long-term plan that we should be considering moving forward, and so I'm interested in hearing your thoughts. As we move forward, also with building the new headquarters, wherever it may be, I want to know specifically what you want in the headquarters. What do we need? What do we don't need? None of us have a law enforcement background.
Right.
We come as laypeople, and so I want you to really tell us what you're looking for.
Right.
Yeah. Commissioner Bryant?
Yes, chief, let me, you just got a laundry list from the city manager.
No, the mayor.
I'm sorry, the mayor, not the city manager.
Actually, he was cringing.
And you have a lot of great ideas yourself. This is my just basic structural advice, and you probably expect it to come from me, is that you need to actually develop the plan, because there's so many things that if we don't actually write it down and have metrics, as has been presented earlier, that tells us how we can see success. What is success? What does it look like? And when is it expected?
Right.
Otherwise, we'll have our own expectations, and some of us may want it all tomorrow. So I suggest very strongly that you write that out into a plan. I'm sure it will align with the city's strategic plan, and then we can actually say to the public, look, this is what we're doing, and this is when it will get done.
Great point, thank you.
Mayor Perchin?
I just wanted to add, chief, welcome onboard.
Thank you.
Glad to have you. I want to caution my colleagues, though, that you don't report to us, that you report to the deputy city manager, and that we need to be giving her that laundry list, and that you all work together on that, okay?
Yes, ma'am. I couldn't agree more.
For the record, she's got the laundry list for me.
None of it scares us.
Commissioner Matlow?
Yeah, first off, thank you, thank you for the presentation, I think. Community violence and crime issues in Tallahassee are paramount to people across our city, no matter what neighborhood they live in, it's the top of mind, so look forward to working on a new direction and how we really get a grapple on it, but I also want to make sure we don't put the full weight of the burden on law enforcement.
That's right.
We know we have mental health issues and facilities and access and our problem, and I think we also need to take a bigger look at just treating violence as a community health issue. There's great programs in our community, like Community Connections, that teach nonviolent communications to previous offenders. How can we reach individual people and actually direct them on a different path that has nothing to do with law enforcement? We talk a lot about our community stepping up. Great to see hubba bubba here. I won't say his real name, but all the community partners that want to come to the table and making sure we're capturing that. We know, last year, we funded some additional youth programs, but I don't think it's all about money, it's just people who want to be involved, how they can get involved, if it's facilities, like how can we be the organizer that captures everybody, make sure they don't go away, and really direct their efforts to where they can go. Secondly, I wanted to address a different conversation about crime, and with our media partners here, I just think it's kind of important, because this is community-wide, and it's just the stigma that a mugshot can create. I know this firsthand, I was arrested in my twenties. Many of you probably got that picture in your mailbox about a year ago. These things follow you. I think a lot of papers around the country, media sites have moved away from it. Florida Today decided no longer to publish mugshots. I think as a community, we should look and see, is there a public value in actually doing that? Does it outweigh the stigma that's created when that's attached to somebody before they're committed of a crime? And especially with our young people, our children, our babies, how we can get to them before that sting was placed on them and try to intervene and take them in a different direction. Thank you.
Excellent. Final note, it's been a joy and pleasure, by the way, to meet your wife and kids and family throughout this process.
Thank you.
You have an absolutely delightful family that is so committed to this community, and I just, I really enjoyed getting to meet them all.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Manager?
Cynthia, will you transition us? Excellent job, chief, we appreciate your enthusiasm and direction, and as you know, you have our support. Let's move to the next one.
So Mayor, Commissioners, next we'll bring Dr. Thomas, and we have threatened him to stay within his timeline. He's so excited about the work that he's doing, because it speaks to the issue that Commissioner Matlow just said. It's one thing to have a kid in the paper and have their mugshot there, it's another thing for the community to address the issues that lead to the act in the first place. And programs like Tempo and the work that we're doing there, which started as simply a GED program, but when you, when Kimba provides his update, you will hear about the great things that these young people are doing, and I think it is starting to address some of those kinds of issues. Let's not worry about how the picture looks as much as let's worry about the fact that our kids even have done something that could lead to that kind of disruption in their lives.
Good morning. Thank you, deputy city manager Barber.
Good morning.
Mayor Daley, all the respective commissioners, city manager Goode, and all the appointed city leaders and officials. It's my pleasure to give you an overview and the audience and my colleagues an update on Tempo, 27 months after the addition of the program. As you can see, that's 2525 Texas Street, Sunrise Apartments, that's my very first applicant in the program. That's why it's my keynote picture. That is Kiara, and that's her young son Joshua. I'll tell you about them later and their progress as we go through the presentation. My next slide. As you can see, again, those ages 16 to 24 who are not in school or are in the labor force, they've left school without a GED or high school diploma, and they're unemployed. It is a recipe for disaster. The American Community Survey indicates there's 57,000 of those individuals in the Tallahassee area. You take that number by any municipality, divide it by 1/8, and that gives you the 7,000. I'll show you also about some data triangulation that I did to show that number is correct. My first year ago was 70 participants, and that was quite aggressive. 70 participants for one person in keeping up biweekly phone calls and checking on them, delivering bus passes, knocking on doors, going down sidewalks. You've seen all of the news things in the videos. I'm happy to report today, 27 months later with that one applicant, Kiara and Joshua, on 25 Texas Street, milestone record of 800 participants in this program.
Yeah, that's right.
I want to quickly acknowledge case managers that have been hired to help me. When they came onboard, I was at 650 in three months' time, in neighborhoods, knocking on doors, making phone calls, going through, talking to people at churches. They have gotten 150 new applicants in three months' time for this program. My case managers will stand up, Demetrius Burks, Tia Washington, Anthony James. We will well exceed the 1,000 that I was hoping by 2020 of this June, and with respect to the strategic plan, we are exceeding our expectation. We want to touch 30% of that population by 2024. We're already at 11%. Next slide. Now, where do we start? Okay, I told you before, we started 2525 Texas Street. That map is a map of our proposed promise zone. Those are 11 contiguous census tracts areas that have some opportunities and also some challenges. That's where we started, because that was the initial focus, that's where we needed to begin at. We started in Census Track 10.01 South City. Now, I mentioned the 7,000 to you, I want to show you something, and we've been down 1010 Basin Street, we've been down 2502 Holton Street, and almost every street in that area. The next slide, please. I want to tell you this, this is the first time this data's ever been presented, first time ever. Now, we know we have the 7,000, right, by the American Community Survey, but we did not know where those numbers lie, per census tract. I want to thank city manager Goode, deputy city manager Barber, Mr. Lavin, for the summer of 2018, that gave me some resources to go out and do some census tract surveying. We went out to every 41 city limit contiguous census tract in this city and did random surveys about disconnected youth, and that data shows you that where those numbers lie per census tract within the city limit. The green highlighted ones are the promise zone census tract, and if you look at the one 10.01 South City, there's 280 estimated disconnected youth in that city's census tract. We have already touched 147 of them. That is 53% of that population, because that was a major area with Platinum Drive, hotspots in those places, we focused our efforts there. Next slide, if you would. We have this data throughout all the census tracts here in the City of Tallahassee, so we can strategically go about where to find these disconnected youth. I do want you to know, data triangulation. Williams Cox, you'll be very happy to, as commissioner. Not only did we look at that data from the American Community Survey and their calculation, we also did random surveys, and we talked to 20 people in every single census tract. We found out, for every 20 people we talked to, in the promise zone, one out of every 20 was a disconnected youth. Every random 20 person in a non-promise zone, two of every 20 was a disconnected youth. You are twice as likely to be a disconnected youth if you live in the promise zone. But we did those calculations, you can look at the numbers yourself, when you aggregate those numbers out and disaggregate the data, you will see 7,000 support to the American Community Survey. We didn't stop there. We took that 57,000, and we took out all the juniors and seniors in Leon County Public Schools, those 18- and 24-year-olds in college. You take that number from the 57,000, that was 50,000, we still came up with the 7,000. Data triangulation. Thank you so much. Next slide. In schools.
Amen.
In schools, we have what we call an IEP, an Individualized Educational Plan, when we've got specific things that we need to do with kids. Tempo has an IEP. We'll start with the I, impact on poverty. I think the best way to get out the poverty, the quickest way to get out the poverty are jobs, what a novel idea. 200... 250 referrals we've made to Career Source, which helped them with work experience programs, that Dynamic Futures programs. 41 of our participants have fair wage jobs already. 14 have living wage jobs. 140 participants have found minimum wage jobs since we started this program. 10% of participants have jobs here with the city of Tallahassee. Let me thank all of you, my partners, my colleagues, for employing Tempo participants. Seven underground utilities and public infrastructure. One in facilities management. He may be here today. Jacquez is here. Jacquez, Jacquez. Jacquez is working in the building with us now. One in parks and recreation. One in fleet. We're going to add more with Mrs. Ojutayo's program as a cadet program to do code enforcement. We'll add more with respect to, as Chief Rebel has already said, our Community Safety Officers Program. Thank you so much. Because business partners ask me, Mr. Mayor, they say, well, are the city of Tallahassee employing any of your Tempo participants? And I say, yes, they are, and thank you so much. Also, we're partnering with AJAX. And I know, Curtis, you don't like this term, but it's their term that they use, a disadvantaged workers program. So when they began construction in the city of Tallahassee, we will have Tempo participants already set aside that will have gone through the GED program, welding, plumbing, concrete pouring. They are ready to work for AJAX construction when they start to work with the strategic plan. You ask us by five years to have at least 100 participants to have fair and living wage jobs, well, we are exceeding that expectation, as you can see by my job numbers now. The E, and you know I would being a former principal, education. I get teary-eyed every time I look at these pictures. That's my first group. Ms. Barber, that's our first group. Those are our real babies. 12 received GEDs in Cohort One. You can see the numbers. But I wanted to tell you about that because most of what we're finding on the streets are ninth and 10th grade dropouts. And just because kids are dropped out of school in ninth and 10th grade does not mean they're reading at the ninth and 10th grade level when they drop out. So we have a challenge getting kids through a GED program, but we're working on it. As you can see right now, 116 enrolled in classes in Term One. Of those 116, 10 have already completed their GEDs. 46 are GED test-ready. That means they've already passed three of the four modules. They've only had one more to go. 33 have passed two of the four. 27 has been successful on their tests on adult and basic education. We have 64 new enrollees starting this term, adult and community ed. Ms. Barber, I will tell you this. Right now, we're on the verge of having more graduates in this Cohort Group than FAMU High, Acela Christian, Robert F. Monroe, and some of our other local schools. With respect to the strategic plan, again, our strategic plan, we are exceeding the goal because we want 150 in five years. And as you can see, we're on the verge of doing just that. Now, when it comes to education continuum, and this is part of, Ms. Barber, Kimpel, you got to pick up the Tempo. You just can't stop at a GED. You just can't stop at jobs. We also have participants going into higher education, and we have those tracked for you. You can see the numbers where they are. We have 34 total participants at this time in 27 months of work. Think about that. Enrolled in higher education. We do not just want to stop with them getting a GED. We want them to go on to Lively and the trades. We want them to go to TCC to FAMU. We have MOU with them for that. We want them to go to TCC to FSU, as you can see those numbers. Strategic plan goals, 150 in five years. We are exceeding that goal. Public safety on everyone's mind, but people don't realize, over half of these participants prior to even getting into Tempo had already had a law enforcement problem. Over half. Not one is re-offended, the others haven't offended, and no one has violated their probation. Our strategic plan goal is 0 to 10% recidivism because, you know, you keep getting numbers, you may not be at zero. But I want you to know, our recidivism rate is better than Norway's. Now, why would I mention Norway? Because Norway has the world's best recidivism rate at 20%. We're better than Norway's world's best. I want Tempo, Tallahassee, to have the world's best recidivism rate than beat Norway. Norway also has one of the highest graduation rates in the world as well. Might be a correlation there. We partner with State Attorney Campbell's office. We are an educational overlay program for 16- and 17-year-olds. What we're saying to Jack Campbell, and he said to us, I like Tempo so much, let's have this in all my jurisdictions, and let's look at when a 16- and 17-year-old come before us, and they may have a citation or whatever, a misdemeanor, let's not just say, give your community service. Say, hey, look, young man, young lady, if you don't have your GED, we want you in Tempo. Let's take care of that, and then we'll look at dismissing your charges. We are on our way. As I say again, the last slide, picking up the Tempo. What I envision is a South Side Tempo re-engagement and technical center. And we want to focus on wraparound services and job skills training. We want to deal with push-in services for mental health and not just make referrals to Apalachic. We want to deal with daycare. And I'll tell you a little bit about Kiara and Joshua in a minute with daycare. We want to deal with computer labs. And we will require that they must go through certification of conflict resolution, financial literacy, and civics and government. Those will be required at the re-engagement center. We would do the soft skills into those other skilled job labors areas so they can go and get them a good, fair, and living wage job and make a living for themselves. I'm also looking for state legislation for other municipalities. There are 27 congressional districts in the state of Florida. There's 291,223 disconnected youth in those municipalities. So it's not just Tallahassee. When I met with Congressman Lawson for District Five, Congressman Dunn for District Two, Congressman Lawson has over 13,000 disconnected youth, many of those in Tallahassee in his district. Dunn has over 11,000. So this is statewide. I would love for us at the Tempo re-engagement and technical center, somewhere on the South Side, to be the statewide training center for certifying other municipalities across the state of Florida and how to do what we have done here in Tallahassee. I'm excited about that. I want to be number one. And I can tell you, I can assure you that once the governor, and Mayor, your weight will be here, once the governor understands and realizes how many municipalities across the state have disconnected youth and what they're doing and what we can do with this program. We're the only program that started with a mobile program, don't have a re-engagement center, and we are moving in that direction. I need your help. We already partnered with FSU's College of Social Sciences, FAMU's as well, College of Social Work. They want an accredited internship program with Tempo to send their social work majors to our program. We have continued local business partners. As you might notice, some of those latter ones, Dollar Tree, Dollar General, Family Dollar, we have partnerships with them now because these participants are patronizing these businesses. We're saying to them, partner with us and hire them. So therefore, we want to continue this. And last but not least, I'm on the clock. But I feel something coming on.
Oh, look at Ray. Oh, your mule.
Thanks to our TNI department, we now have in place our charity tracker case management software where every single participant will have a case management plan. They'll go through the seven phases of case management. We'll start them from point A to point B. We want to try to do each one in a calendar year's time because we must have fidelity to this program. It must be meaningful. We cannot just abandon them. And the reason I say that, because Kiara was my first applicant. Kiara just started her GED classes this past term because she did not have daycare for Joshua. Joshua now has daycare, and Kiara has started her GED program. We will not abandon them. Thank you so much.
Excellent job.
Now, I'm going to close with this. I could talk about return on investment and enumerate it. I can tell you, for every participant that gets a fair wage job by the time they're 25 years old, you will save $40,000 and healthcare expenditures on that individual in their lifetime. You will save $13,000 in public safety expenses on them. You will save $9,000 in welfare payments to them. They would generate for their community $106,000 in their lifetime. But you cannot enumerate that picture. You cannot enumerate human capital. And that's what this program's doing. We're changing lives. We're changing families. And I appreciate this commission and the leadership of Tallahassee for giving us this opportunity. I tell my case managers every day, you can ask them at any time, if they can't specifically tell you an opportunity that they didn't create before they leave the office, they have not done their job. We create an opportunity every single day. I got letters from participants. I can't read them all to you now. But I want to tell this one man, about a young man who had dropped out of school. His daughters were contemplating dropping out. He joined Tempo. He wrote me a letter saying, thank the city of Tallahassee for this program because now I can say to my children, it can be done. Let us all pick up the Tempo. Thank you.
That was the organ. Now it's time for the election.
Dr. Thomas, now. Now we got the hard work. Here we go. Sorry. Let me start off by saying, you know I'm one of your biggest fans.
Yes, sir.
I think what you are doing with the program is absolutely amazing. And congratulations on several levels. First and foremost, I appreciate you focusing in, from a statistical standpoint, on the census tract and not on just zip codes. Because it gives you a more accurate picture of the hurdle that we face from a geographic location and allows you to zero win. I think that's so very important, and I'm so glad that that is your focus. Too many times, based on that Canadian report that came out, we talk about zip code, zip code. Census tract is statistically the appropriate way to go. And you're doing a great job. As we start moving forward into the budget season, which we are quickly approaching, I am interested in knowing as well, just like with the police chief, what resources, as you work with the team and as we work through the system, what additional resources, whether it's, you know, boots on the ground in the field, or what can we do to help support the Tempo program? It's very important that we know that. I am excited to hear that you are teaming up with the police department to help build the ranks in the civilian corps. I think that's great. I know you've been really active and also working in partnership with the Build Up Tallahassee program that we started this year as well. I mean, you're doing amazing work and really pushing the boundaries on what we can do. And I really do appreciate it. We always seem to also talk about, you know, in community, we go to these conferences, we talk about third grade reading levels. And third grade reading levels are very crucial, and they need to be one of the things that we pay attention to.
Absolutely.
But the GED is so important, and I don't think we focus enough about helping our youth get their GED. Because what many people don't realize is if you do not have a high school diploma or a GED, you cannot enter into a trade program. You cannot go and learn to be a welder or a carpenter, all the trades that we push, you know? We push them. But if you don't have the GED, you can't even get in.
That's correct.
So the focus that we are helping people get their GED so that we can get them into these programs is so crucial, and it's absolutely fantastic that you're concentrating on that. I am a huge proponent as well of actually building the first Tempo facility. I don't know where it goes. I don't know what it looks like. I encourage you to get extremely creative with overlays. If we're looking at the South Side, let's look at enterprise zone, overlaid with the CRA, overlaid with other aspects that could bring in federal and state dollars as well. And let's build the dream. I'm in. I'm in. I think it is crucial. I think it would be an absolutely fantastic addition to our community, and I think it's desperately needed. Now, again, where is it physically located? I don't know. But I'm with you there. You also touched on childcare. And I think that one thing that's very important as a holistic approach is we need to look at possibly partnering up for some type of 24-hour childcare facility here in our community. For those that do work nights, for those that do work weekends when normal childcare might not be available. I've talked to a couple of nonprofits in this community that already are established, whether it's Kids Incorporated at the Lincoln Center, of what would it take to take your program and actually turn it into a 24/7? Because I love the way how you're doing a holistic approach to the individual and helping them move forward. And finally, going back to the actual facility, I encourage you again to look at the overlays, how we can maximize all the different resources that we have here locally. Again, CRA and city budget obviously being two that come to mind. But we've also not really, we haven't gotten too, too serious. And I think Commissioner Matlow, you, or Commissioner Williams, Madam Mayor Perchin, you brought up the fact that we've got to create an economic environment that's so enticing, we want people to come. And I think that we can do a lot better work concentrating on the enterprise zones and really putting together some, maybe this is the public-private partnership that we've been waiting for, to put together an economic package where we've got skin in the game, but we also attract private dollars as well to be able to move forward. So those are my thoughts. Dr. Thomas, keep up the great work. Thank you very much. Mayor Perchin?
I wanted to say thank you, Dr. Thomas. You know, we go way, way back. This was my oldest son, who's my age now, high school principal. And even back then, you know, Dr. Thomas and I had a mutual respect for one another, but we know that, we knew that neither one of us was playing about education. And I'm glad to see that you've continued that. And I absolutely love, love, love the data and how you acquired the data because that's very important. And having boots on the ground, you know, I'm on Facebook, I'm trying to pass information to people who may not know it. And I'm constantly telling folks about Tempo. So one of the things that I know we're going to, we're working on is getting the word out. But everybody in this room can help get the word out. You got the information, you've shared this information. We need to let folks know that Tempo is here. Everybody didn't get the information the same way. Some people get it on the, in the paper, some get it on the news, some get it from social media. A lot of young people are getting theirs from social media, not necessarily Facebook, it could be Twitter. Because my buddy here likes to use Twitter. I need more than 140 characters to say what I got to say. But then some on Instagram. Wherever they are, we need to make sure that we're talking about not only Tempo but other programs, the TFL program, all these programs, because many times people are misinformed or don't know. And so it starts a debate on Facebook. And I find myself out there saying, no, you need to look at this. No, you need to know that. Because I want to educate before we have people, you know, showing up at commission meetings going off when it's there. We just got to give it to them. We got to provide where to get it from. So I'm just really pleased and proud to see what you're doing. And I've told them, you know, single-handedly, you went out there and got about 600 plus by yourself. And now that you got a staff, you know, I always got a son, Christian, would Neo say that I'm a force, but with you, I'm a movement by myself, but together with your people, you're a force now. And so I know you're going to hit your targets. I know you're going to hit your goals because more and more people are going to hear about it, and they're going to want to come. And I know, because you've shared with me the area of South Side that you like for this to be. And it makes sense because it's near the transportation hub that's coming for people who have transportation issues. We can provide that transportation. Star Metro, where's Angela? She's back there. They're ready to pick these people up and bring them there. So I'm looking forward to continuing to work with leadership to do whatever we can to make that happen. I could walk to it from my house. So, you know, I especially want it near me so I can walk to it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you.
Didn't mean to interrupt. That was rude. Didn't mean to point, that was rude, I'm sorry.
I want to commend Dr. Thomas on the work that he's doing with Tempo. He and I worked together at East Gaston High School and he was principal out there and I saw then his passion for young people and how much he gave of himself, working with young people to make them successful in that capacity. And certainly I was excited when he was offered the position with Tempo and we see that that has been a decision that was well worth its merit in that respect. But I'm going to give a shameless plug for Lively, even though I'm retired from Lively now. But Dr. Thomas and I had a very good working relationship and partnership when I was on staff at Lively. I was a little troubled that they hadn't followed up on that since I left. But I give a shameless plug because I know Dr. Thomas talks about the living wage and low and minimum wage jobs that these young people are acquiring and that's a good thing. We want to see them employed but when you've got a welder coming out of Lively after one year's training, making $125,000 a year, that's where we want them to go. We want them to become auto mechanics making $30, $40 an hour, HVAC technicians making $30, $40, $50 an hour. And so I, Mr. Mayor, would hope that when you all meet again with the superintendent and county administrator that we would talk about that.
Sounds good.
And making sure that that partnership not only is resurrected but grows in that respect. I think you have four or five that are at Lively now.
That's correct.
But that number can certainly grow. There's financial aid available, there's staff there that would work with these young people and so I certainly would like to see that partnership strengthen. And it also is a partnership with the GED because Lively has a GED program through adult and community education. So there's lots of opportunities there.
Yes, sir. Commissioner. And by the way, Nehemiah's called me twice since we've been in there.
Nehemiah was one of the young ladies that he and I were working with together to try to get her into one of the programs at Lively. But thank you.
Sure. Commissioner Bryant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me first just say congratulations. I mean, you have done an awesome job. You have connected what you're doing to your strategic, to the strategic plan and you had metrics to demonstrate outcomes that you are projecting to actually exceed. That's awesome.
Thank you.
But let me tell you what I'm most excited about is your passion for what you're doing. Because passion goes a long way. The more excited you are, the more excited people get. And I want you to know, you've mastered that, okay? You're doing an outstanding job.
Thank you.
Well, just knowing when you talk to young people, they also see your passion and then they start to actually embrace that. So congratulations on that. And there are so many programs in Tallahassee that interface what you're doing. I mean, even the Purpose Build that's coming up that has the actual childcare part of that program is another connect. The other thing is that, and you may be doing this already, but as we look at young people and what their actual giftedness is and where they want to go, their vision for their own lives.
Correct.
Some of them will want to go to Lively, some of them will not. Some of them will need to want to go to college and you're covering the whole landscape and I would suggest strongly, if you don't do this already, to use some kind of assessment tool.
We do that.
You do that already. Awesome. Because I don't want to pigeonhole anybody in any area. We want to make sure that they have access to whatever their career goals are.
Correct.
So you're doing an awesome job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Matlow.
Yeah, I'll echo those comments. I was going to say, this is more than a job to you. It's a mission and your passion just shows. I don't think I've ever seen you out in public where you didn't stop me excited about what you were working on in that moment. And it's great, it's contagious and we thank you for your leadership there. And, you know, I want to echo the mayor's comments. This is growing exponentially. Whatever resources we need to get to, 7,000 kids, whatever it is, how do we get there? How far out can we get there? How do we start laying the groundwork to scale this to reach everyone we can? I also wanted to comment on the facility since I guess you kind of showed your hand on what you're looking for in the police department and I've been looking at Lake Bradford the hardest. But I would be willing, I won't let the police station go to North Monroe without some sort of commitment for development on the South Side of our city. A year ago, we had a conversation about Town South when that fell apart and I think we all agreed, look at, see how we can get that redeveloped. And I think that would be a good site for the Tempo program because one of the things when we look at the sense of place, nobody thinks of an asphalt parking lot, a giant asphalt parking lot as a sense of place. And I think that site specifically and that corridor is just prime for economic development where it could be community facilities like Tempo but also not having to look at the tenants because, you know, remodel those buildings, less expensive, but build something that touches the sidewalk, that's just a jewel, redevelop the whole site and then look at community needs like smaller scale retail facilities, so local businesses and people who can't afford $20, $30 a square foot but can afford a place that's 500 square feet or 600 so they can really get their door, their foot in the door and we can jumpstart that kind of thing. We've heard from a lot of artists that are in need of maker spaces, just what public facilities can we offer? How can we tie it all together and deliver on a commitment to redevelop? And I think this is a perfect time to have that conversation as we balance the two and we're making sure we're equitable in our investments around the city. Thank you.
Excellent. All right, Dr. Thomas, thank you. Certainly do appreciate it. Folks, we are 15 minutes ahead of schedule. We're going to go ahead and break for lunch now, which will put us back, why don't we give ourselves a little bit of time, come back at 12:45? That's a solid hour for lunch. Is that appropriate? Does that put us?
We're due back at 12:40. You want to stick to that?
Yeah, we'll just stick to that. Back at 12:40. Sounds good. All right, so we stay in the recess till 12:40.
Thank you, sir.
Can you bring us back into order? Can you bring everybody back to order? We've got great mood music for... We can turn the music down by chance? There we go. All right, all right. We're going to go ahead and jump right in. I'm going to go straight to the city attorney on the review of the ethics ordinance, our overview. Madam Attorney, good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Commissioners. It's my pleasure to present to you some of the great work that you did last year in the area of ethics. I was at a conference on this past week, the Florida Municipal Attorneys Association, and we were talking about some of these issues and I was very pleased to be there and to talk about some of the great things the city is doing and also being representative of the very comprehensive ethics reform that you engaged in on last year. So I'm going to present in a somewhat very summary fashion, some of the hard work that you did and its impact on the City of Tallahassee employees and officials. Of course, you know, we always have to, when we start talking about ethics, it's not just the city's ethics code that we have to be concerned about, but we also have to start first with state law and what state law requires and then we overlay that with the City of Tallahassee's ethics code because it is a more stringent code. And then we also have to look at our City of Tallahassee personnel policies and procedures and make sure we're in compliance with those. So there is a multifaceted decision-making process as we make decisions involving the government. One of the most expansive things that this government did in December of last year is that we expanded the definition of covered individual. Covered individual formerly was simply public, this is related to gifts and the prohibition of no receipt of gifts from vendors or lobbyists or those who actually lease property from the city. So we expanded the definition of covered individuals to beyond elected and appointed officials to include the elected officials assistants and aides. Also, we included all members of City of Tallahassee boards and committees, quasi-judicial as well as advisory committees. It includes also employees who have to file financial disclosure. The legislature changed that definition this year, applying this year to be $35,000 or more of ability to purchase on behalf of the government. So anyone who files financial disclosure under state law is subject to our gift ordinance. And then finally, also, we added procurement employees, which is a very expansive definition that includes anyone engaged in any phase or facet of the procurement process and that is 12 months before they actually have that involvement. So it's a pretty, it's a rolling timeframe and so we have engaged in vigorous and robust training of City of Tallahassee employees. And I want to thank, of course, Amy Toman, who is my deputy, who has been pretty much eight hours a day on the phone assisting City of Tallahassee employees as they try to make sure, because I think most, all the employees that I know are very concerned about wanting to follow the law and the law as this commission has set. And so we have been very vigorously trying to train our employees since the passage of this ordinance. Also, the city commission made the, well, what it did was basically stated what is the state law and if there is a call on the City of Tallahassee hotline, I see I've got behind. If there is a, if there are calls on the hotline that are of an ethics complaint nature, we have made sure in our code that it states that these are confidential calls until a decision is made regarding legal insufficiency, whether that's made at the staff level or made by the local ethics board or the local ethics board dismisses the complaint or there is a finding regarding probable cause. Also, the city commission set up a statute of limitations in terms of bringing allegations or violations of the ethics code. And so that is set at five years, which is the same period of time set in state law. We, in order to assist the local ethics board in getting information and having people come before the board, we provided in our code that anyone who has, who is subject to the ethics code, and that of course includes all city employees, city officials, those who are, who serve on boards, that if there is information needed, the board has the ability to subpoena that information from those employees and also has the ability to command their presence before the local ethics board. If there is an instance in which they are seeking information outside of the jurisdiction of the ethics board, we provided that they can then go to the court and ask for the power to issue subpoenas in support of the exercise of their jurisdiction. Some of the provisions that were adopted in the code apply not just to what I have listed as covered individuals but also to those who are just general employees of the city. This includes misuse of position. It prohibits someone in a position from using any resource or benefit, any resource to benefit themselves or others. The standard now is whether the employee knew or should have known that it would bestow a special benefit. Regarding non-public information, we have, this provision also applies to all employees. So if there is information that the public generally would not have access to, that information can also, cannot be used for the benefit of the individual employee or official or for the benefit of others. This would be some, like information, like financial information that might be protected by public records laws or technological information that might be protected. At the urging of our mayor, the city commission required full public financial disclosure of all the elected officials. Therefore, now elected officials not only file a Form 1 but also file a Form 6, which that type of financial disclosure includes net worth, assets and liabilities in excess of $1,000, secondary sources, I'm sorry, secondary sources of income and, I can't read down there. Okay, interest in specified businesses. Thank you. All right. Okay, and then gifts. Now, this is probably the most expansive provision in terms of what the city commission did. And as I said, essentially, the city commission said, we want to have a zero-gift policy related to vendors and lobbyists. And then in the definition of vendors, this also includes those who lease property from the city or those to whom we are attempting to purchase property from the city, whether that's real or personal. So in adopting that definition, as I said, we expanded it to include all covered individuals that I previously discussed. In providing for this, there is a list and we are continuing to add to that list and refine that list of city vendors that is posted on the city website as well as lobbyists so that the public has full transparency as to who those folks are. There is an exception provided in the code that the city commissioners can continue to serve as, for example, chairpeople of charity so that they can solicit funds that is not, that are not for themselves or personally for others but related to a charity. So you can still be like the chairperson for the American Heart Association or something of that nature. And also, the provision provides that if the person is a relative as defined by the code, that you can continue to accept a gift even if your relative is a lobbyist or a So last fall, after our ethics training, the city commission directed the city attorney's office to seek a greater explanation of when and under what circumstances they can accept gifts that are given to the city. There are a lot of attorney general opinions on this issue but we wanted to make sure we were properly following the law. And so we solicited that opinion from the state ethics commission. That opinion was given on October 25, 2019. It was very helpful but of course we have to overlay the city's local ordinance on top of that. So what we do know, that if the city is the sponsor of an event, or sponsors an event that is held by a nonprofit, that gift can be accepted by city officials or city employees that are covered individuals. And the only issue that we would have to look at is if that entity that was also a vendor. So we would check the vendor list and if they're leasing property or something of that nature, we would make sure we overlay that. We would rely on what is the published cost in determining the value. So you would look at the ticket or you would look at the published cost and there is no opportunity in determining value to back out that part that is charitable because that is a gift directly from the city. If it is, if the value of that gift is more than $100, then it would have to be placed on the Form 1 document for disclosure purposes. Okay, so if there is an organization that is directly funded by the city, by the budget process and that organization provides some tickets to an event to the city, then those are considered an indirect gift from the organization. And they are permissible as long as the giver is not a lobbyist or vendor of the city because again, as I said, we have to overlay that part that deals with the city's local code. Regarding the CHSP process, that is, when you look at the attorney general opinions, that process is a competitive process. It's not like a situation where an entity is coming to the city to request money and in that instance, it is a gift that can be accepted. But then again, we have to make sure that the gift is not above $100. If it is, then it has to be reported. Now, if that organization, nonprofit, receives money through the CHSP process but is also, for example, a vendor of the city, that is, it perhaps leases property from the city, in that case, the gift could not be accepted because then they would be a vendor of the city. So we always, as I said, in doing the analysis, we overlay the city's local ordinance as has been adopted. Okay, so if the city is the primary organizer of an event and an outside entity wants to donate in some way, for example, they may want to set up a VIP tent. In that case, again, we have to look to see whether or not the entity wanting to do a VIP tent is a vendor or lobbyist of the city. And if that is the case, then the gift could not be accepted. Otherwise, the gift could be accepted but it would, it could not be accepted if it's above $100. Okay, we had, the penalties are substantially the same as they were. They include the oral reprimand, the written reprimand, written letter of instruction and a $1,000 fine. What was added is the ability of the local ethics board to order restitution, that is, the return of whatever has been benefited to the person who has been found in violation. There are a couple of... And community service.
This is a community service. Different community service.
Right. And so another provision that was added is the honest services provision. This is not a provision that is something that would go before the local ethics board but would rather be handled by way of a citation process. And if a elected or appointed official engages in what is considered a violation of of the honest services under the state of Florida law, such as by engaging in a bribery or a kickback scheme, then there can be a fine, up to a $5,000. Now, this can be undertaken by the filing of a citation, but also it could be added as a count, for example, if some other governmental entity was pursuing charges. We also have the enhanced fines, fines for city lobbyists. So lobbyists are required to register, city lobbyists are required to register, and any intentional failure to register or to adhere to any of our reporting requirements would subject them to a citation. And the citation process could be, of course, initiated by the city, as our citations are currently done by either a code enforcement officer or the city police department. The fines are very much enhanced from what they were, because under 1-7, which this provision previously referred to, that fine would have been $100. So now, for a first violation, it is $1,000; for a second violation is $2,500; for a third violation, $5,000; and a fourth violation in a three-year period results in suspension for up to three years. So that is what has been happening in the area of ethics. I'm glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Good job, thank you. I got a question for you. Are we, as individual commissioners and the mayor, the regulatory body of making sure that everybody is registered lobbyist, or whose responsibility is that, again?
That responsibility falls on the treasurer clerk.
Okay. So my point is, is that, you know, there's been a lot of talk in the media lately about meetings that we've had, and like you all, I've had a policy of taking 100% of every meeting that's been requested. So because we meet with individuals, whether or not they are registered lobbyists, that is not my regulatory duty, but your regulatory duty?
Yes, Mayor, I think probably the best course of action, when you do have meetings with individuals, I'm the one to register and should, should receive the information from them, and their payment is well under our, under our code. But if you have someone that you're meeting with, it's always advisable, just to benefit them, to ask them the nature of their work, and you, I'm sure you often, or usually know what the nature of, of the meeting is, and just, it's an easy question, have you registered with the city? And if, as a lobbyist, and if they have not, encourage them to stop on the second floor at City Hall, and we can go through the particulars, and if they haven't and need to be, get it done, and if they don't meet the criteria, then we'll let them know that as well.
Excellent. I hope that clears up any, any confusion amongst the media, and if there's any additional questions, I know Mr. Cook will be more than happy to help out. Mayor Pottin?
Well, my question is, the question I guess we need to ask, are you coming to lobby, or we just, you want to talk about something? Because to me, like, like the mayor, you know, people want to talk to you, you talk to them, and I don't, I have not asked, you know, are, you know, are you lobbying me, or, or, you know? To me, it seems to be like a silly question, but it sounds like it's, it's going to become a pertinent question now, and I just, I don't want, I know we're in, we're in a different climate, but I want us to be, do be transparent, and we don't want to throw up barriers to keep from having meetings with folks because they're lobbying. But you just, you just need to make sure that they're, if they're lobbyists, that they need to be registered.
Sure.
And we can, you, we have a list of registered lobbyists that we can, at our fingertips, can, can check, right?
Absolutely. You can check it, as well as the public. That, that list is available on Talgov.com.
Okay.
I would mention that, I think our experience in the last, in recent years, has been typically that those who are lobbyists are well familiar with the idea of lobbyist registration and rules, and if they know that we have them, they're going to follow them. That, it's their bread and butter, it's their business. They register with the state and other states and other municipalities. So usually, the person who is a lobbyist is quick to say, "Tell me what the rules are," and, and will comply. And less often is there a problem with someone, you know, who's not a lobbyist, who is a citizen or constituent, who, who meets with you and wouldn't meet the lobbyist's definition, and those are the ones who are less likely to be familiar with the rules, but that's because they don't apply.
Follow-up question. One of the things that I was asked of, by the media, was whether I kept minutes of those meetings. And my, my meetings are scheduled like in 30, 30-minute blocks. And so I typically don't keep minutes, because it's, it's so quick. So we don't see us heading in that direction, do we?
Well, there is no requirement in the law for you to create any document or minutes or anything of that nature, and usually, any of, any notes that you would have for yourself are not public records, they are your private records.
Okay, just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Questions?
I'm sure, yeah, you can see it on my face, can't you? The question, the question I have is, someone wants to meet, I'll just give a scenario, and they say that they're not a lobbyist, but they want to meet. I hope we're not getting down the road where they have to prove that they're not a lobbyist in order to meet.
Yeah, I don't think any of our provisions indicate that you should not meet with any given individual. As, as has been stated, all of you are open and transparent, and happy to meet with citizens and interested parties, and there's nothing within the updated code that would prevent you from doing so. It's just that those who are lobbyists should be registering, but that has been the case before as well. So it's a, it's a change in some of the specifics, but there's, there's been a provision for quite some time for lobbyists to, to register, and, and that onus is, is on them. We try to make sure that we have conversations like this, so the public is aware.
I, I just don't want to discourage citizens from scheduling meetings to come and talk about whatever is on their mind, because that's why we're here.
Agreed.
And there is a very specific definition in our code of lobbyist. That person either has to be paid to be doing what they're doing, or they have to be a part of an organization that has a governmental affairs branch, and they are part of that. So they, they have to be being paid, and then they have to be seeking some action to change something that is coming before you for a vote, some change of action. So it's not just someone who just wants to come and talk and greet you, and tell you about what's going on in the world, you know, it's, it's more specific than that.
And where, I think it gets interesting in looking for some clarification. Let's take, for instance, the Commission on the Status of Women, which is an incredible organization that we support. They actually receive funding directly from the city of Tallahassee. They do advocate on behalf of issues. They have appeared before this body. How would they fall under this particular new order?
They would not be, they would not be lobbyists. They're actually working on your behalf, because you set the direction and policy for what they do, and you've already done that through an inter-local agreement with the county.
Okay, excellent.
I'm swaying.
Sure, Commissioner Matlow?
Yeah, I mean, I think you, you nailed it, you know, we, we'll do the best we can to track what we need, but the real burden falls on the lobbyists. And if, if you're coming to our office to meet, and the intention is you're making money to be there, you're most likely a lobbyist, and you should register. It's not a hard process. Go see Jim Cook, you know, before you stop in, you can hit that floor and come right up. We're open to meet with anybody, but register.
Any other comments? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and state on the record as well, over the break, we had the issue with declaratory statements. When we have our ethics training coming up, our annual training, I think that we need to revisit our policy on declaratory statements. What is the law? What's in the spirit of the law? I'm uncomfortable with declaratory statements, and I just request that if you're going to do them, do not copy me on the email, because it just gets too close to the line. I think we also need to have the conversation in regards to the charter as well, and refresh our memory on the non-interference clause. You actually contacted each one of us over the holidays in regards to that policy, and let's make sure that that is also included, so that we don't toe the line too close.
Absolutely. Glad to present.
Great. Any other questions or comments?
Can you clarify the declaratory, declaratory statement for the audience?
Would you like to meet?
Yeah, go ahead.
So basically, you know, under, under the sunshine law, there is a requirement that if the matter may foreseeably come before the city commission, that there, there is no back and forth discussion by way of oral communications, or written communications, emails, et cetera. And so sometimes, there may be something sent, but a one-way communication does not violate the sunshine law. But it can cause someone to feel like they should respond. And so what, what the, what the mayor is stating is, he would prefer not to get a communication that kind of invites discussion, even though no one engaged in discussion, but that does, you know, it seems to invite discussion among commissioners, and, and so that, that is what I think you want addressed.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you very much, Cassandra. Certainly do appreciate the update on the ethics ordinance overview. We will move on to the strategic planning overview, Mr. City Manager and the Assistant City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, at this point, we want to talk a little bit about how we measure ourselves. So we've talked a lot about the structure of the strategic plan, the metrics, the goals, the initiatives that are in it. Clearly, in order to, to hold ourselves accountable, have the public have visibility of how we're performing, we've got to develop tools beyond what we have today. And, and, and just the principle of that kind of check-in. And Assistant City Manager Lavin and his team have been working on this. I think you'll like what he's going to share. So we've got some things in motion. Last year, we were focused on the development of the strategic plan, and now with that approved, moving forward this year, we want to talk about those tools and techniques we'll use to measure ourselves against that. Mr. Lavin?
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, and Commissioners. I'm so excited, I'm the last speaker, after lunch, talking about performance measures. So y'all better stay awake, but I'm going to try to keep this exciting.
Stay woke, stay woke.
Stay woke, that's right. So back in October, the commission approved the strategic plan. So what do we do now? Where do we go from here? And I'm going to talk a little bit about the framework that we're establishing to monitor the five-year strategic plan, what steps we've taken since the plan was approved in October, and how we're going to be using an online platform to show the data as we progress through the five years, so our citizens have access to that data. We're transparent, and we're accountable for the five years of the strategic plan. And then I'll talk about what steps we're going to be taking in the future, as we, we go forward. So the framework for tracking the strategic plan, this organization has had a history of providing information online to our citizens. We were one of the first cities in Florida to put our budget online back in 1998. The city auditor has all his audits online for the citizens to be able to, to access. The treasurer clerk has the annual bondholders report also online available. Our CAFRs are online. And so our moving forward with the strategic plan is going to be no different from what we've done in the past with the budget, city commission agendas, the CAFR, and the annual report. We, so the, the plan contains a lot of information that we're going to have to be tracking. It has seven priority areas, eight goals, 27 objectives, and 103, 133 targets and initiatives. So as you can imagine, this is going to be a huge undertaking to get the data, the baseline data, the, the historical data, so we know where we've been and know where we're going to go. And staff is currently doing that. And I'm pleased to say that as of this week, we have 85% of the baseline data collected already, working with the departments very closely on gathering that information, and we have about 17% of the historical data. So we're doing five years of data, so we'll know where we've been as we progress in the plan over the next five years. So we recently acquired the online portal for performance measures from OpenGov. You all may know that we use OpenGov on our website for the budget system. It's a great tool. It provides the citizens an opportunity to look at the budget. They can query online, they can extract data, they can show the data in a pie chart, in a line graph, in a bar graph. It's a very powerful tool and very flexible. OpenGov has recently released a performance measurement portal. We're on the cutting edge, sort of, of that portal. There's very few cities that are using that, but it's growing every day. The map that I'm showing you right now is the cities and municipalities, school boards, counties that are using OpenGov, whether it's their financial portal or their performance management portal. And so we're excited to use the tool, because as part of the budget process, we've been using it, and it's provided us, provided us a great tool for our citizens to look at the budget in a different way. The good thing about this system also, it provides us an opportunity to benchmark against other municipalities. So if we know that there are similar cities our size that are using the performance measurement portal, we can look at their data and sort of compare ourselves to see how we're doing. So I'm going to show you an example of Winchester, Virginia. They're using this performance measurement module. They're a small municipality outside of DC, about 30,000 residents. They recently modified their strategic plan. The original adoption was in 2015. They just modified in 2019, and they've got four goals, 11 objectives, and 48 targets. And they're using this tool to show their citizens how they're progressing on their strategic plan. And for every goal that they have, they've identified a landing page where they talk about the goal in narrative format. They provide the objectives related to that goal. You'll see that there's a status line on that page that shows whether that goal is on track or not. We're looking at using different colors for that status line, green for good, yellow for needs monitoring, and red for needs attention. So we're working on that. But Winchester, Virginia is using this. If you drill further down on that objective, you'll see that there's Objective A, and it talks about what the objective is, and then they've got a graph showing the data for that specific objective. The, in this case, it's unemployment rate versus their target. It shows data going back to 2016. It shows what their target should be. In this case, it's 3.9%. And you can see that the data, if you hover over each of the bars, it's going to show you the number. For 2019, I've got it highlighted, it shows that their data for this target, this objective is at 2.8, which is below their target, so they're on, on target. So I know the police chief said he was going to have a big announcement later today. I'm going to show you a preview of what our site's going to look like. As I said, we're currently building it. It's not as exciting as the police chief's presentation, but stick with me. So this is our five-year strategic plan dashboard. This is going to be the landing page, it's going to be on our, on a strategy page on our website, on Talgov.com. This is going to be the initial page, it's going to talk about our strategic plan. It's sort of set up like in a story format, so you can put whatever narrative you want on this page. We'll talk about the strategic plan, we'll talk about when it was implemented, what the goals are. But then you can drill down further once you get to this page. And so in this case, I'm showing you an example of Goal 1, economic development, which will have its own landing page, all our goals will have their own landing page. We'll have narrative format also to explain what that goal is, any information that we want to provide. You can drill down further down into specific objectives. In this case, it's increased Tallahassee International Airport's economic impact on the region. And then even below that, there's two charts that you may not be able to see too well, but one is Target 1C2, and one's Target 1C3. Target C2 is annual total passenger traffic. We've collected five years of data on that. If you hover over the bars, it's going to show you what the data is for that specific year. In this case, the highlighted year is 2019, and you, you can see that it's 807,000-plus passengers. And then we also have an example of the annual total cargo metric. What's good about this tool is that if you click on any of these graphs, it actually gives you the capability of drilling down on the data. And our citizens will have the ability to drill down on the data. If they want to see a line chart instead of a bar chart, they can do that. If they want to extract the data from here into an Excel spreadsheet, so they can manipulate and do whatever, they can do it. The first landing, once you click the chart, is going to show you the actual bar graph, and then it's going to actually give you the data related to that, to that metric. So in this case, we've got already five years of data, 2014 to 2018, showing employment, deployment, total passenger count. It's going to show you the percent change from the prior year, and then we've got a program to let us know whether that's a positive or negative trend. And as you can see, for the five years that we have tracked right now, four out of the five are in the positive realm. And then as a summary, the dashboard will have all our goals up there, and you'll see that each goal will have a variety of charts related to the objectives and the targets that have been set for each of those goals. We're building this, so economic development, however many targets they have, will have as many charts related to each of those targets, and data supporting each of those.
Rowell, as you move on. So these little tiles, there'll be about 100, I would say, based on the strategic plan. So they would ultimately be populated. Rowell will talk about timeframe, but we won't wait to develop all 100, you know, over the course of the- course of the year, but we'd make ready those that are ready to display and then add them over time.
Yeah, so where do we go now? Staff is currently building this. We're looking at finalizing data collection. As I said, we're working with all our departments, making sure that the data that we're collecting is valid data, that the metrics, the sources that they're using are valid ones to support the data for those metrics. As we finalize these, we'll start launching these on our webpage slowly, with the goal of having all these done within the 10-10 to 12-week timeframe. As in all planning initiatives, as Commissioner Bryant knows, we're going to be doing a Plan, Do, Check, Act. And we're planning on providing an update to the Commission in March on where we are with this dashboard. And then as we, this becomes a living document, we'll continuously monitor to see if we need to make adjustments as we go forward. And we'll be working with our departments, making sure that they're tracking the data, that the data's working in the direction that they want to. And then if we have to make any adjustments, we'll be bringing that back to the Commission on a regular basis.
Excellent. Any questions? Sure. Mayor Pretten.
I have a question. I want to volunteer to be one of your testers, inside and outside, because, you know, what we see inside might be a little bit different from what is seen on the the public side. So my experience is that it will be different, and sometimes we got to make sure we got a lot of eyes looking at it. So I'm a volunteer to do that when you all need me.
You're recruited.
Thank you.
Excellent. Commissioner Bryant.
Yeah, I'm trying to follow. Let me just ask a few questions. Will the dashboard have icon that we can find out, number one, what was the baseline data? I see where it says we're going to look at each goal and the target. And if, I'm trying to figure out how we got to the target. And is the target related to a five-year or one-year initiative? Because, and just as a follow-up, if I see the target and it says below .039, and I'm at 0.28, that's a good number. What does that mean? I don't know.
I'll use the the metric related to our fleet, and we will be going to an all-sustainable fleet in the next 15 years by 2035. So we know where we are today, how many vehicles we have that are sustainable. In working with our Fleet Management Department, they said they're going to try to incrementally get us to that point by 2024. And they've identified, I believe it's a 25% increase every year of the number of sustainable vehicles that we are required to have in order to meet that goal of being 100% sustainable. So we know where we are, the baseline data. And then we know what our target is, 25% a year, additional electric vehicles in our light-duty fleet, and we know what the ultimate goal is.
Okay. And what I'm asking you, if I may?
Sure, please.
Is this going to be a part of this dashboard? You know, because you're telling me now. I don't want to have to take this document, go back to the strategic plan, find it, and find out it was 25% per year and right now. And obviously, the challenge is that I won't know in two years. We may be below, but I, as compared to what? Because then that's the only way we can determine if we're on the right trajectory to get to where we're going. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah. So in the example I gave you, we've been talking internally on how to show that on the graph. And so you may see a bar line with our progress, but you may see a line showing what the target is over the next five years. And then the bar, as it gets closer to that line, you're achieving your target. So we're talking about that internally, but the answer is yes. We're going to try to have the baseline, what the target is, and show in the chart how we're progressing towards achieving that goal.
That's great.
So Raul, if you go to the slide with Winchester, Virginia? That shows that the city features, yeah, the 2.8. What you're seeing is that where the dotted line is, that's the target, .04?
Right.
Well, that's where it was. And so in this case, they're measuring unemployment. It's a good thing that it's going down. You want it to go down. But you're showing where it's, where it was, and you're showing how you're meeting it. It's going down. And so if you were looking, using the example that you were using, we'd be going up in a different direction. But you would be able to know where we were and what our target is based on the historical and data that you're collecting now.
That's correct.
Because I heard you say you're going to gather all the data that you can from the past to load it as well, to help us see where we've been historically, where we are now, and where we're going.
Yeah, we're loading five years' worth of data, historical data. And so, yes, this is a good example of where you can set the target. So in this case, the dotted line is what their target is of .39%. And the bars show where you are in relation to that target.
Okay.
Any further comment? Raul, thank you.
Really do appreciate it.
Okay, we're going to move forward now with opening up for discussion. Wendy, we're going to move on for final discussion here.
I just wanted to ask a specific question about the presentation.
You can ask Raul. Raul, will you go back and answer Wendy's question real quick? Let's go ahead and move forward with discussion. This is the meat-on-the-bones area. We're going to start with Mayor Pretten, Commissioner Richardson, and work our way around.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And let me just say to the City Manager, Deputy City Manager, and Assistant City Managers, and all who have worked on this, this is good stuff. Last year at this time, you know, I, let me speak for me. Didn't have any idea what we were going to be up against, but I think that having now become not necessarily a rookie, where you're in, and I like having, you know, putting something up and then coming another year later to compare, to see where we are and where we're going and those kinds of things. I'm very impressed with what has occurred. I'm also very impressed with where we're going. There are just a couple of things that I want to make sure that we continue to keep our eye on. As you know, that I'm real concerned about the impact of poverty. And so we've had great conversation and education and workshops on affordable housing. I want us to also look at some more low-income housing. I know we got Orange Avenue Apartments, that's coming along. We've put some investment there, and that's great. But we must know that we got to have low-income housing all over this town, because we've got to figure out how to solve some of the homelessness issues that we have. And I know that we have a Tiny Homes project, we have transitional housing that Mr. Kearney is doing, and I think we're supporting that. But we've got to also continue to be strategic and look for opportunities to have some mixed-use housing that would include low-income housing. We're not saying that we want to build something where only people with no income or low income should live. We're saying that we need to make sure that we're taking care of those who may not be able to take care of themselves right now for housing. So that, I heard someone mention the primitive tents. Well, we do have some primitive tents, but they're not ones that people are coming to town to use. This is where, how people are surviving. And so we want to look at, look at how we can better do that. I also want us to work very closely, even more closely, with the school system, because I know we're doing some things, but we want to continue. I know this is the election year, and regardless of what happens, we've got to keep our community moving forward in a positive direction. Title I schools, all schools, whatever, we need to make sure that resources are provided as best, as equitable as possible, to make sure that all our children are successful, not just those who happen to have corporate sponsors. We want to do our part there. And I know that at the Commission meeting, we're probably going to present a check, or at the School Board meeting, we're going to present a check for the school supplies. So we're doing our part for that week of parking fees that we collected. We're going to make sure that we get that to them, because it's beginning of the school year for the second semester, and they're needing that, and they're getting ready for test mode. So I just want to make sure that we're making great strides. We're doing, I think we're doing great things, but we also want to just keep our eye on eradicating poverty. We're capital city, and I think I read somewhere, what's the size of our economy? I don't want to mess that up.
13.8 billion GDP.
In the city of Tallahassee. And so we don't want anybody, I hate to say this because people, you overuse it, we don't want to leave anybody behind. We want to make sure that we're all included in that GDP. And kudos to Tempo and Tifla and other programs that are going to help us put money in the pockets of people, good education first, and put money in the pocket of people, to be able to participate in the GDP. Once upon a time, oh, and I was a little girl, it was a longer time than you, Mayor, we used to want to strive for the American dream. Well, the American dream has changed for a lot of people. Some people, the American dream is getting a meal tonight. Some people is buying a house, and some people is developing equity. So we want to help, we want to be a part of helping to make that happen for people here in the city of Tallahassee. We have great stuff going on here. We got great stuff going on the strategic plan. We got great stuff going on Visit Tallahassee, but we got to make sure that it includes everybody. Everybody gets a piece of the pie. And I look forward to us continuing to work together. I think that we're getting our sea legs under us now, and we're able to stand and be able to speak intelligently about what's happening in our city. And I want to always be open to speaking to citizens and residents. In the grocery store, stop me. At the red light, as long as the light is red, stop me. Wherever, wherever. I want to hear what your concerns are, and I want to bring them to the table. I want to applaud Mr. Hubba Bubba. He's gone to work on another issue. But Mr. Hubba Bubba and some others, Coach Willie Simmons, where they're doing an event this weekend. Everybody's trying to do something to try to help us solve our people puzzle. That's what we have. We, I don't want to dress it up, put lipstick on a pig, but we have a people puzzle, and people are trying to figure out how best to make life work for them. And we're trying to figure out how to help them. So we need everybody. There is no silver bullet. So I'm open to hear what everybody's ideas are, and let's see if we can't come together and collaborate and use our resources as well. So I'm speaking to my colleagues. I've enjoyed working with you, enjoy working with you going forward. And I believe that we're pretty much on the same page, that we want to see Tallahassee continue to thrive and be the all-American city that she has been and that we know that she still is and will continue to be. With that, is Dr. Thomas here? Kimma Thomas?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, off in ushers. I'm done.
Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to compliment certainly the, well, let me first say, it has been a pleasure working with you all over this past year. I'm just amazed at how much we've accomplished in a one-year period of time since you all have been elected, and it has been a pleasure working with you and helping to move our city forward as a leadership team. But I certainly want to compliment the City Manager and his leadership team for the work that you all have done, especially with this strategic plan. As I told you, I was always interested in how the county, when they would have their retreat, you know, they would have their strategic plan, and they would look at where they've been and what progress they've made and where. But yet, we never did that as a city. And so I'm glad that we're there now, and we will be able to show the citizens of this community what we're doing and where we're going, and how they can be involved in that. And that's what's so important, is showing them how they can be involved, and that their input is actually listened to, and it can be implemented in a lot of, in a lot of instances. And so I am really excited about where we're going as a city. We've done some amazing things. We've got lots of good things to do. I want to make sure that wherever a person lives in our city, that they can feel safe, that their neighborhood is safe, and that we will be investing in those neighborhoods. I know the Association of Tallahassee Neighborhoods is here. There are other neighborhood associations. I want them to know that we will be working with them, because that's, that's one of the things that we value here in the city of Tallahassee, of course, is our neighborhoods. And although we're growing and development is occurring, we want to make sure that we still protect those neighborhoods and what they mean to our families and residents and guests here in Tallahassee. But I want to make sure that wherever a person lives in the city of Tallahassee, they can feel like they live in an all-American city. Unfortunately, right now, we're not there, but I think we're all aware of what needs to be done and will be committed to making that happen in the near future in a lot of instances, but certainly in every instance, I hope, as we go forward in the far future. That's such a turn, far future. Okay. Elaine, so that's a good one. That's a good one. I was making it up on the fly.
All right, Jesse.
But, but what I do want to again emphasize, as I did earlier, is that, that we do have two Tallahassees. And I see it every day as I traverse the city from where I live and what I see in the immediate area around where I live. And we've got some work to do in that regard. And I want, I will always keep that on the table, because like I said, I want wherever a person lives in this community to feel like they live in this all-American city that we say we are. And I believe all of us are committed to that. And so I just look forward to working with the City Manager and the leadership team, and certainly my colleagues here on the Commission, and all of our partners throughout the city, because we certainly can't do this all ourselves. So we all have to work together, this community full. So this has been a great start, and I guess I'm just looking forward to working with you all and staff to continue the good works that we've started.
Excellent. Commissioner Bryant.
Thank you. I have a laundry list of things I want to say, but let me first start as everyone else has, thanking the members of the Commission. I'm the newest, I guess, by a few hours. I'm the latest. But this has been an awesome year that we've had together. We've had a lot of things to come before the Commission, and we have spent time studying, reading, and making informed decisions. And that's what it's all about, that positively influence the citizens in our city. I want to publicly thank, I've done this personally, Allison and her staff for this booklet of Tallahassee 2019. You realize that many times, and you know, I'm great on strategic planning, and it tells you what you're going to do and when you're going to do it, et cetera. But the only way that we move beyond just that we did it is that we publish it and talk about it and celebrate it, because then we become excited about what we did. We'll be like, Ms. Thomas, you may not get that much enjoyment. And then people in our community will start to celebrate with us, the many accomplishments. And this is a great example of it, of what we've done over the past year. And it wasn't just us. The members of our community have come out in force almost at every Commission meeting about an issue. We have to celebrate that, because many communities don't have input from communities. So I'm sure that's going to continue, and I think it's a good thing. I'm Tallahassee proud. I wear my little t-shirt following behind Commissioner Williams' car. And now people do stop me, in fact, just last week, someone stopped me. I had on my t-shirt, and they said, where'd you get that from? I'm Tallahassee proud, too. So that just generated a discussion for me about why I'm Tallahassee proud. So we need to also not only speak, but actually carry the mantle in ways that people can celebrate with us. I think one of our biggest challenges for 2020, and I'm going to try and figure out ways to try and make this happen also, is that we need to develop strategies to communicate better with our public about the good things that we're doing. People tend to focus on things they don't have rather than the things that we do have. So I think this whole communication strategy has to be intentional, and we need to celebrate with people in our community the great things that we have done, and then help to shape the expectations for where we are going. And I think there are four things that really come to my mind in 2020 and beyond that I think are interrelated. Number one is economics. Number one is economics. Because if we can have business vitality, we can create jobs, and we can actually move the city forward. But in addition to having funds, we have to have the educational component. Because if we're not ready to move forward because we have not the GED or the high school diploma of whatever it is, we still are left behind. And then the third thing is that we not only need the education and the economics, if we don't, we have a problem in criminal justice. Herein lies our public safety challenges. And the last thing we need to continue to do is to involve community. And I think we'll continue to do that as we move toward meeting the goals we've outlined in our strategic plan and having people celebrate with us the success that we have and as we plan for the future. It's been my pleasure working with everyone here. Kudos to the city manager for doing a great job and the staff for doing an excellent job this past year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you. I can't believe it's been a year already since we just did this. But we made a lot of great progress this year. And we can look at the Clean Energy Plan, the most substantial ethics package a city's ever seen. We can look at, you know, deciding to let our staff push the airport as far as it can go and really seeing progress come out of that. So really glad to see our progress, excited to see the metrics as they get developed. I know that when the strategic plan, we first adopted it, that was something we brought up. Great to see the progress there. I think a couple, we had a lot of community members speak today. Thank you for staying all day. We appreciate the engagement. So I'd like to see us, you know, look at some of the recommendations that were made, see where they can fit in to the plan, and then look at metrics. I know we pointed out the broadband metric may be, we're already there. So as we have fiber being put throughout our community, start measuring that progress and see as that spreads, how that grows and where we still need to go. I really like the idea of the meeting with the school board and talking about schools. Mr. Cook, if you just make sure we have proper minutes taken of that. You know, sometimes we meet with county commissions and school boards, and ideas may come up that may come before another board. And I think you just make sure that we always have proper documentation of what was said at those. I like to look at, one big thing I think we really did well last year is we looked at the people in the city of Tallahassee who were the lowest paid. And we said, let's try to get all of our temp workers to $12 an hour. And we made great progress, and I think that directly impacts people's lives. So as we look to the future, two years from now, three years from now, I think we should look at how we can go beyond that. There's a big movement to bring everybody to $15 an hour. I think we should take the lead on setting a community wage. This will probably be on Florida's ballot for the voters to decide, but how can we take the lead on encouraging us to pay our lowest paid better, but also look at our vendors and work with the county and the school board and see how we can start to really raise the lowest wages across the city.
Well, let me say that it has been a great year, and I do enjoy serving on this body as well, and we've been able to accomplish a lot of things. First and foremost, we have spent an entire year putting together this amazing strategic plan. We are laser-focused. We are heading in the right direction. You know, I tell people all the time, last year was kind of a disruptive year because we had some big ideas that we brought to the table that hadn't been considered. We pushed staff in a great new direction on some of these big ideas that might have at first not have been what you were used to, but you jumped right in and welcomed it with open arms, and here we are. I'm very proud of our communications and we've been able to accomplish with getting the public more involved and creating more of a transparent government moving forward as well. We've had significant personnel changes this year. I mean, you think about it, mentioned earlier, we've had three police chiefs in one year. We've had an appointed commissioner join us. We've appointed one of our four appointed officials with the new auditor. We have changes at the CRA. Wayne's serving as the interim, and we'll move forward with the hiring of that position. So we've had some personnel changes. It's been a little bit disruptive, but boy, we've got the leadership team in place. We are heading in the right direction. 2020 is going to be an amazing year for the city of Tallahassee. And I want you to know, I too really enjoy serving with all four of our appointed officials and your staff, and I appreciate your dedication. With that, we are done a little, do you have any closing comments, any of the appointed officials as well?
Good afternoon.
That's why you're ahead, right?
I think we'd like to share our thanks for working with you too. It's always going to be challenging. It's never easy. If it was, you know, we wouldn't be doing our job. So thank you for your support, your leadership. I look forward to this year.
Sounds great. We stay adjourned.